So what's yours?
Sunday nights.
Exactly.
Or things to talk about.
It's a good show.
Never seen more four scenes, but.
It's one of those ones whenever we go travel internationally, we get to see that.
Weddings?
Or whatever.
Learned so much.
Eddie, all right. Okay, so let's call to order the Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, the Fall Street City Planning Commission. And Mr. Trainer, can you call the roll, please?
Yep, Madam Chair. Mr. Polinsky?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Comott?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Friedlander?
Here.
Mr. Krawinski?
Here.
Thank you, and absent is Mr. Krasner, but we have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. And I think the next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes suggested from anybody, or if not, can we have a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. No speaker series tonight. So the next item is the receipt of petitions. Mr. Trainer, will you give us the summary of written correspondence?
Sure, we had Elizabeth Cunningham write the planning commission regarding concerns with the Bicycle Master Plan update. And then Alex Ramey wrote into the city regarding positive developments in bike and pedestrian infrastructure.
Great, yeah, that was a nice note from Ms. Ramey. Yes, yeah. Do we have any in-person petitions tonight?
No, Madam Chair, I have not received any speaker slips.
Okay, great. So I think we can move to our action items. And item 6A is the Yacini Jewelers site plan. I understand this is to be continued. Mr. Fuller, did you want to introduce this item?
Yes, say well, thank you. This item was originally scheduled for this evening. There was some late correspondence that came in that indicated there were still some pending stormwater calculations. And there was also a pending issue with parking. And so staff had notified them in advance that they needed to, you know, resolve those. It wasn't resolved in time for this meeting. We had preempted by doing property owner notices 10 days in advance because at that time, we thought this was, you know, going to be scheduable. And because of that notice, I asked that the planning commission open the public hearing on this, see if there's any public comment, close that because of the APON advertising notice, and then there's a motion to continue this item indefinitely.
Okay, great. So we can go ahead and open the public hearing on this item? Is there anybody here to speak on the Yacini Jewelers site plan tonight? Seeing none, I think we can close the public hearing. And you said there was a motion to continue the item? Does anybody want to make that motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we continue the application for Yacini Jewelers, application Munis number 2023-0138 until next meeting.
I'm sorry, I think the staff suggestion or... I think the staff suggestion was to continue it indefinitely. Is that right, Mr. Fuller? Sorry.
That is correct, yes.
But do we need to indicate a date, or?
No, because at this point, we don't want to continue the APON notice to a date specific because we don't know what the date will be that they'll be in with the final site plan.
Okay.
So once they get the information in, we've reviewed it, we will schedule it promptly then.
I amend my motion to resume our meeting indefinitely.
Okay, is there a second?
Second?
All right, all in favor? Do we need a roll call vote for this?
Yeah, we will, just to continue, just to be sure. So start with Mr. Polinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Comott?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Friedlander?
Yes.
And Mr. Krawinski?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
All right. All right, so item 6B, Board and Commission Liaisons. I think we discussed this at our last meeting, and I think we just wanted to finalize things tonight. I think Mr. Stevens, you were not present for that discussion, so I hope you had a chance to take a look at what we've assigned to you.
Yep, I'm fine with everything.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
The only thing I would note is the Economic Development Committee, I think it is called, EDC, is the name that should be listed if the group is going to continue. I'm not sure if council has decided if they're going to keep that in their structure or not, but if they do, Mr. Stevens is the lead and I'm the backup, but it is the Economic Development Committee.
Ah, instead of council, I see. Yeah, could you make that change, Mr. Trainer? Thank you. Any other changes? Any other? Anybody else want to swap? If not, do we need to move to adopt this, or is this just sort of a?
No, if there's no changes, they'll just be effective immediately.
Great.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any more discussion.
No, this looks good to me, too. Thank you all for the extra time that you put in with our boards and commissions. I think it's very helpful.
Okay.
Good? All right. Okay, so then item 6C is our Planning Commission Annual Report. I believe you drafted this, Mr. Trainer.
I did, Madam Chair. So the planning commission had a work session on this a couple weeks ago, might have been December. And so usually, I think in years past, the annual report includes... I think the only update is the kind of last page of the report where normally the planning commission includes its sort of work plan and recommendations of things to work on. Planning Commission has not yet had a chance to have its annual advance, and so sort of substituting that with discussion held about goals and sort of the Planning Shops work plan that was put together in part with discussion with the planning commission, city manager and other staff. And so that's the only update of the report for you. Happy to take any other questions or comments, or if there's any edits, further edits to it.
Any discussion? Did you say you wanted them to scroll through it, Mr. Duncan? Did you want to look at that last page of the report?
Yes, I read it earlier, but I didn't bring a paper copy, trying not to kill trees. Fine photo of all my fellow.
Yeah, I really appreciate the photos that you include in this, Mr. Trainer, and really all the hard work you put into creating this.
Yeah, there we are. So this part here, Mr. Trainer, the recommendations and priorities for 2020, is that going to go to the city council, or is that just for internal information purposes here?
That's right, yeah. This is part of the annual report, so this will be part of the recommendation, you know, to council about things that are, you know, kind of in the works, routine work, things that are already happening with projected completion dates. And most of this, again, is sort of stuff that's already been discussed and teed up or is already in the works, like I said. There's a couple of things, kind of future work on scheduled items that has been discussed, like the cottage housing ordinance update that Mr. Stevens mentioned. We include that in here. That doesn't, you know, staff hasn't yet given, been given a directive to, you know, work on that, but is in there as something that could be considered at a future date.
Okay, I understand. Don't go off that last page, thank you. Okay, and that light, there are a couple of things that I'd like to get input from my colleagues on. One is the item there at the very end, update residential multifamily parking and trip generation. I bring that up just because we're getting ready to open, you know, the multifamily and ground floor retail Broad and Washington project in earnest, along with Creative Cauldron. And the trip generation data for that particular development should be of considerable interest to folks, so I would like us to underscore that that is a priority. I'd also actually like the same data on Founders 2 when it opens, which may happen sometime this calendar year. And just in general, I think we're going to want to try to get citizens accustomed to our new garages and how they work and how you get in and out of them, and to be able to provide information to the council about how much they're getting used, I think would be helpful. So that's just an add-on or more context for that bullet point about multifamily parking and trip generation. The other point was something Mr. Stevens brought up, I think, at the last meeting. Somewhere in here, there are a discussion of daycare as a permitted use and the B2.
Allowed uses.
Allowed uses?
Yeah.
Yeah. If that's here, I didn't catch it in my scan three, but that is something that I would like us to talk about sooner rather than later because we have some interest in daycare businesses, and we want to try to have a discussion about whether we think that would be something that should be encouraged.
I know we're planning to talk about that at the annual advance. Is that something that we could add to the, that bottom row, sort of unscheduled items for my, I guess, current? I don't know if that's current or future planning.
Yeah, if maybe make sure it's not already in here. I know that's in our kind of collection of kind of zoning ordinance updates that, you know, at some point, staff's identified that could be updated, that's included in there. Again, none of those have any specific timeline or directive, but it's kind of an ongoing catalog that staff's flagging. So we could, we could call that out as a specific item in this report.
That would be my request, so that we can put a little pressure on ourselves to see if we can find a time certain to actually talk about it sometime in the near future. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
So as, as we had discussed informally on the planning advance, we talked about having the retail study presentation briefing on that and discussion. And that would, that would inform these new businesses that we would look to have zoning code amendments that Jack has alluded to as well. And then it would be a report out on the ULI TAP. We would have some interim information, and then the final report would be in two months. But we have some slides and some video, and so we'll be able to do a summary of that and so forth. And then we talked about a comprehensive plan status update, and then the cottage housing, the status and the post-development reporting on that. And then the Planning Division Work Program and Calendar, which is basically this table with your list added to it, and that was our final item that we had as a draft for the advance. And then to inform on Mr. Duncan's comment about checking the use of the garage and the traffic counts post-development, we have those built into the special exceptions. So once the developments are complete, at that point, traffic studies are done and some improvements can result from that. Founders Row is still pending because of the theaters pending. So once that's, that's in, that'll trigger that paid for by the developer, and similar will happen with Founders 2 to help inform some of the issues. And in the past, staff has done some surveys of utilization of the garages, and so that may be something that we could look at updating as well. So anyway, thank you.
Was that a, was that, can I ask, was that a requirement pre-Founders 1 for like West Broad or the Tenner Hill Building? Those, the reporting of sort of trip generation or garage usage?
Yeah, that's a, it's a voluntary concession for the, the traffic study and trip counts, and that's the one document, the actual trip counts for the, that the site is generating, and then to look at any possible immediate intersection improvements that might result from, you know, the numbers being different than we had anticipated.
Okay, so we have required that for older projects, I guess that was my question.
We've consistently done that for, for all the projects.
Okay.
I mean, back to almost the beginning of this first.
Yeah, I've seen some of the data. I don't know that I've ever seen like a full sort of report from an individual point. Have you?
No.
No, yeah, I'd love to see that.
And then in 2016, we actually did two weeks of spot counts at all the mixed-use project garages, drove through with maps, and were able to calculate their, their usage. And generally, that 2016 study indicated they were about 70% of what they had planned, and a lot of them had requested 20, 25% reductions in the parking, and so it was right in line, generally speaking, all of them, so.
That's useful information.
Yeah, it is, and those garages were probably not built out to the full 100% that was required, right? They were already reduced, and they were still being parked at 70% of that reduced.
That is correct. That was the average we were getting for all the projects, so they were all within 5% of that one way or the other in terms of their utilization. And we did late night drive-throughs of the garages when, during the weeknights as well as weekends, and then daytime as well. So it was a variety of counts, and, you know, so it was, it was good information.
Yeah, it's really important for our, our decision. We have a project tonight.
At this point, there's been no updates to those 2016 counts, so of the existing SEs at that time. So, you know, it would be a good opportunity to do that again, so.
But this is something that the, the developments are providing now.
No, on the counts, excuse me, on the counts, that was staff.
So what are they?
Staff initiated. In terms of the traffic counts, that's required as part of the post-development development.
But not parking utilization?
Parking utilization is not, has not been something that's, that's been captured in any post-development studies.
Maybe something to look at for future VCs. Okay. Oh, sorry, yes, Mr. Krawinski?
Just a question. What is, what is the hard deadline for submitting the annual report? And the reason I ask this question is, it seems to me that sending up our priorities in advance of our advance, our 2025 priorities in advance, the whole point of the advance was to develop our 2025 priorities. It seems we might want to have a fulsome discussion about our 2025 priorities and maybe adjust this. It looks pretty good, but perhaps adjust it during our advance. I know that this is the 2024 report, and we should be able to report what we're, what we did in 2024, but I'm not sure we're ready to report what we are, what our priorities for 2025 are in advance of the advance. Is there anything driving this that we can't, that's not, we don't have any flexibility?
To answer your question, there is flexibility, yes. The annual report is meant to be just that, a report annually that's done, and there's no particular deadline. So once you've produced it, then a representative, usually the chair, presents it to the city council. So the answer to your question is, there is flexibility and there's not a hard deadline.
So I would recommend we hold off on this until we do our advance. I don't know, it seems to me putting forward our 2025 priorities before we do, have our advance on that subject might be premature.
Any other thoughts on that?
Is the, are the, do these priorities come from somewhere, meaning in the sense like these were the priorities as of X date in the fall, and the advances, like, we're going to add on to it?
I think a lot of this reflects sort of what's already on the Planning Division's plate in terms of work that is ongoing, either in the council work plan or is just like already underway.
That is correct, yes. This, this reflects the current council work plan and their strategic initiatives as well as the current work plan of the staff. And so we, we built that back in December, the previous director did, and so that would be the plan that would carry us through this year. We brought it to the planning commission informally back then, and we wanted to bring it back formally. And then it would allow you to comment on it as well as maybe help us with priorities. And then you could add items of interest, and they, they may not be immediate actions, of course, but they would then be on part of the recommendations and a list as we move forward, we would continue to look to address those.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Krawinski, like, I agree conceptually, like, that sort of seems like the point of a planning meeting is to talk about what you're going to do for this year, but it sounds like this is, like, they're sort of already happened with the group that was here in the fall before we joined, and that what we, that the planning meeting, the advance, is how do we want to augment this thing that is already existing as opposed to starting from scratch? Maybe gives us a little, more of an opportunity for next year, for the 26 version of this, to like, get that in now.
The recommendations and priorities are listed as not staff priorities, but planning commission priorities. So if they're, if they are our priorities and we haven't met on them yet, it seems that we might.
Well, it could be the planning commission's priorities before you and I were on the planning commission. I don't, that's what I don't know.
I think, I think this is sort of reflecting that the planning commission is going to be working with staff on a lot of, this is like a lot of routine work that staff has planned for 2025, and so we are going to be supporting staff in executing that work. There may be other projects that we're interested in pursuing, but it's important to remember that staff can't really work on anything until they've been directed to do so by council. Is that correct? I mean, maybe in any sort of like substantive capacity.
Yeah, generally, I mean, that's why we developed our work plan, so, you know, we were, we had all our objectives and staffing, you know, programmed for this year to address these. And as we stated earlier, you know, that it comes from our routine work as well as council guidance, and so at this point, you know, this is a staff-generated work plan, but, you know, what you're doing is adding on to the list of some of the things you're interested in, and that's, and that's fine. That's, that's exactly why we bring it in front of you, not just to bless our work plan, but to have you understand what our workload is, and then also, if you have anything that's a priority, then to let us know, and then at the same time, those priorities could be added items to a future list.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if, if there's no forcing function to deliver it, we haven't had that fulsome discussion about how to augment the staff priorities yet. I mean.
And we are, I hope, going to schedule that tonight.
You're going to say, Madam Chair or Vice Chair, we all talked about when the date for the advance is?
Sometime in February or March, I think. Is that like the next, do we want to talk about that now? Or when, when did you want to have that discussion?
You know, I was thinking to talk about that under the director's report.
Under, yeah.
But in terms of the advance, because that's not this item.
Right. I'm, I'm happy to defer this until, I think we will hopefully have the advance in the next two months, potentially, so.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll be able to schedule that.
I mean, I do take your point that like this table is, is more, it's a reflection of staff's workload and work plan, and so maybe even just amending that intro bit, Jack, to kind of say, this is what, planning commission will be supporting staff in working, executing this work plan. And then maybe we have a list at the bottom of things, topics that we're interested in, in looking at pending future resources. And that is something that we could work out at the advance. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it does. I'm sorry, it does. I think we, we may want to annotate somewhere in there that, exactly what you said, that this is staff's priority, which we, the planning commission will sort of, and, but I do think we should make note to the fact that these could change, the commission's priorities could change once there's an advance to reflect.
Or we can.
Or be augmented.
Just wait till.
Yeah, we can just wait until we have the advance. I mean, typically, the, the annual report is delivered in like January, February timeframe, so I think council's used to receiving it then, but I don't know that there's any particular reason that we need to do it then. So if we wanted to wait till late March or something, that would be okay, right?
So you're suggesting we wait?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
We can defer it.
Yeah.
And have this document reflect whatever comes out of that meeting?
I think.
Yeah, so sort of the intro for the table, more, more about like, this is, this is staff's work plan, and planning commission will be collaborating with staff to execute on this work plan. So we are, we are going to be hearing about a lot of these issues as you're working on them, we already are. And then maybe, you know, like pending, pending resources, or, you know, in our future, 2026, 2027, these are some of the top issues that planning commission thinks we, we really want to take a look at. Because, I mean, part of our role is also lobbying on what we think is important to council. And then council has to agree and direct staff that they should look at it, so that, that's kind of, I take your point, Mr. Krawinski.
So this is agreeable with staff, and it makes sense, so.
Okay, thank you for your flexibility, and thank you, Jack, for your hard work on this.
My pleasure.
Any other comments or questions? I think we're going to defer it. Is that, do we, do I need to do anything to defer it? Do we need a motion to defer?
Motion to defer, and then?
We can just wait, bring it back, okay. Okay. Next item is item 6D, Rules of. Okay, next item is item 6D, rules of procedure and remote participation policy. We saw this last time. Mr. Fuller, did you want to, okay.
Yes, this item was presented to you in a work session format, so it's now on agenda tonight for your adoption. It has not changed since you last saw it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Were there any questions about the policy? Are you going to make a motion to approve it? Please do.
I'm making a motion to approve this.
A second.
All right. Do we need a roll call vote?
Sure, yeah. We'll do it.
I don't know, do we, can we say all in favor?
We get paid per vote, so let's, you know.
Yes. Mr. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Friedlander.
Yes.
Mr. Kowinski.
Yes.
Thank you, motion taken.
Thank you, Mr., um, thank you, Jack. Okay, all right. So item 6E, planning commission minutes from January 15th, 2025. Anything of note on this? Any changes anybody had?
I didn't find anything on the 15th. I think the 22nd had somewhere down around line 100, a spelling of someone's name that was wanting to be a Y instead of an I. Jack, does that ring any bells?
I think I saw that on, I think I saw that on my name.
Yeah, okay.
That was, that you or me? Because it's usually me.
It was, it was my Y.
Okay.
It was Duncanski. No, just kidding.
Do we want to move on the 15th minutes?
I've moved it up, the minutes from the meeting of January 15th, 2025 and January 22nd, 2025 as corrected.
No, not a second.
Any discussion, any questions about the 22nd meeting?
Okay, yeah, let's, I just want to make sure I catch those around line 100.
Line 90, oh, where is it? Ah, 109, sorry.
Oh, you know, I actually noticed one other thing on the 22nd, if you look at that too.
Just.
Got any track changes?
Sorry, was there another one?
On the 22nd, the, um, the accessory dwelling, was that the boarding commission, was that the listening session on the 22nd or was that supposed to be on the 15th?
That was the planning commission's work session.
It was our work session. So in the, in the meeting, in the minutes for the 22nd, item 7B says accessory dwellings, boarding commission, listening session. The title of it, it's just listening, go down a little bit. So should it be work session?
Yes.
Okay. And does, does that mean on the 15th that it should have been listening session?
Yeah, the 15th was the listening session.
Okay, and it was, it was, it was correctly noted that it was the listening session?
Let's see, Parklet's.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so those two changes. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, Mr. Trainer. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Okay, so we are going to move to our work session items. Item 7A, 312 shadow walk RPA exception. Mr. Fuller, are you going to introduce this item?
Yes, thank you. This item is for a request for a special exception for the development within a seaward portion of the resource protection area, which is in our Chesapeake Bay mapped areas of the city. This item was originally being scheduled for an action item. However, in looking at the advertising requirements, it required three consecutive weeks newspaper ads. And so we weren't able to get those done in time for this meeting, but it will be ready in two weeks. And so those ads have started to run. And so we've converted this action item to a work session tonight. You had not seen this before. I have not seen one of these in 35 years. So we have engineer Bahilu Kafel, I hope I'm saying that right, from, he's a stormwater engineer. He's here tonight as staff representing this item and I will too in conjunction with him. So we're prepared to start this work session item, but this is how we transition to this. So, thank you.
Okay, great. Is there a staff presentation? Great, welcome.
Thank you. And my name is Bahilu Kafel, with the CTO for Tredipersonal Public Works. I'm a stormwater engineer. I apologize for my voice, I have a bad throat. My son got it from school, so I still have it, so sorry about that. So this application is from city residents, Ms. Killingworth. She's seeking to construct enclosed screen porch that will encroach within the seaward 50 feet of the RPA, which by code requires a planning commission approval. Any land disturbance within the first 50 feet of the RPA, it need to go through a planning commission approval, and this is one of them. So by our code, RPA is resource protection area and is defined at the 100 feet on both side of the stream. That has very intrinsic value in terms of water quality, prevention erosion, and infiltrating some of the pollutants like nitrogen and phosphorus. Now, can you go down, please? So RPA is, like I said, the first 50 feet is called seaward portion of the RPA and the remaining 50 feet is landward. So this particular development is too high in the RPA, but a very small portion is located in the 50, the first 50 feet or seaward portion of the RPA. So planning commission approval required in evaluation, excuse me, evaluative criteria per section 3510 G1C of the city code. Any development encroaches in the RPA is prohibited without getting exception grant from planning commission. And that also include additional water quality measures that include submission of water quality improvement assessment or WQIA. So the evaluation criteria for planning commission review of request exception as provided in section 3511 F3 of city code is the following. The deputy director of planning commission shall review the request for exception and the water quality impact assessment may grant exception with such a condition. The conditions are granting the exception will not give any special privilege to the applicant and the exception also requests not based on a condition circumstance that is self-imposed or self-created. And the exception is the minimum, the minimum necessary to afford relief. The exception also require, will require, request will be in harmony with a purpose and intent of this article, not injuring the neighbors, including the downstream side of the neighbors. And reasonable and appropriate conditions are imposed, which will prevent the exception request from causing degradation of water quality. A little background about the location of the 312 shadow work, it's, the total lot is 0.34 acre or 14,863 square foot. So based on our GIs, around 95% of the lot is located inside the RPA. Like I mentioned earlier, the porch is inside the 50 feet, a little bit inside the 50 feet seaward portion of the RPA. There is a double or nodic trail at the back of the house and it's 1.5 story frame house. There is a brick and asphalt driveway. There is a front porch and rear deck. Back in July 11, 2024, the Forest Church Board of Zoning Appeal grant for applicant for variance for reduction of rare setback. Usually it's 40 feet rare setback, but because of that variant, applicant got the 24.17 feet rare setback. Usually stormwater court, based on the stormwater court, staff will analyze at the location of the RPA line, whether it is the 50 feet or 100 feet. We have a GIS line, but it's not 100% accurate. So per our code, the applicant is responsible to hire surveyor and locate both 50 feet and 100 feet RPA location on the field that is on the applicant's side. Excuse me. Like I said earlier, a very minimal portion of this approach is being within the 50 seaward buffer. So when the applicant submit the WQIA, we review it and provided comment based on the, excuse me, based on the first review, we commented that the narrative and the table of the trees were not much. So we reach out to the applicant to get more clarification and based on, the applicant responded, there is no removal of trees. And it stayed per the Virginia code, they are adding more trees like under story trees, shrubs and land covers. So as you can see on the screen, the staff, applicant responded, there is no tree to be removed. We also receive a public comment, written letter of support for Ms. Killingworth from downstream neighbor, supporting the construction of porch on the existing deck. As you can see the timing, we received a full application in November 2023, 2024, excuse me. We submit, we first review and provided a comment on December 4th. Second submission was received next day, December 5th, and water quality improvement assessment was approved on December 13th and today's planning work session. And like earlier, it was mentioned, because we were overlooking the public hearing, we going to come back to the public, the planning commission on February 19th. We also provided attachment, water quality impact assessment, tree surveying and plaits and all of the lists are there on the screen. And with that, if you have any question, I would like to, I'm happy to answer it.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the report. Mr. Fuller, did you have a?
I would, I would just start off with just kind of framing this a little bit. So I'm going to ask a question. The land disturbance piece of this, is that related to the existing deck and then the porch that's placed on that raised deck? Or is that the area that has to be used to build the deck in which the 2,500 plus is disturbed? What is the disturbance area?
So the disturbance area is, in this case, is less than 2,500 square foot. Based on our code, we require a grading plan for any land disturbance more than 2,500 square foot. In this case, it's less than 2,500 square foot. So we didn't require a grading plan for that.
I had a question. When you said the disturbance area is 2,500 square feet, is that to build it and then it occupies less space than that or the full building would occupy, or it would occupy the full 25 or 2200?
So when we calculate the amount of land disturbance, it's include the entrance from the street to the deck, which is 10 feet wide, and also there is a 10-foot buffer area around the deck, which is also included in the land disturbance. So adding the footprints of the deck and 10-foot buffer area to construct and construction entrance from the street to the deck, all of that added and it is less than 2,500 square foot.
When it's built, would it, it would be 24.17 feet from?
No, when it is built, it's less than.
Looks like it's 15 by 20?
300 square foot. It's 20 by 15.
And I assume we have Mrs. Killingsworth with us. Welcome.
I'm deep in the weeds on this. I can ask her any questions.
Can you check that your mic is on? There should be a green light.
I'm deep in the weeds on this and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know you need to get most of the answers from him, but I can give you a lot of specifics if you need them.
Okay, great. Is there anything you want to, you're welcome to if you, if there's anything you want to share with the commission.
The short version is, it's actually a very small project. It's 300 square feet of new impermeable surface, it, which in the grand scheme of things still keeps the impermeable surface on the property at about 17% of the total property. No trees are being removed. We are planting four trees and six azaleas. They should have very light impact. Unfortunately, the legally mandated calculations are what shows this huge disturbance area. So like there's the reality of what's going to happen and there is what is required for the calculations and they're very different. In theory, the property should actually be technically better for water quality at the end of this because all the calculations into what we had to do to offset it consider the worst case scenario.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Mr. Stevens?
Don't have any questions, but I did go have a look at the property and concluded that the amount of disturbance is pretty modest. And as you say, it's underneath the amount that's required for a grading plan. I, as it happens, I actually live downstream from, so naturally I'm very concerned about this, but there's really no need to be concerned. I think the proposed project is very modest in scale.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, I would just thank the applicant for the effort expended to talk to the neighbors. The item that we have in our packet that has all the letters are, you know, reassuring to anybody who might be concerned. Appreciate you coming, talking with them and getting endorsements basically of what you want to do. So thanks for that.
Hey, what else? I did have an email from Mr. Krasner and he had a comment and I'll just share it on his behalf. He said he was going to ask about any stormwater quality mitigation. He says, "The point of RPAs are to protect the quality of local waterways, ultimately the Chesapeake Bay." They were created by the state's Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act in 1988. As it appears, we can impose conditions on any approval. I would ask staff if our stormwater engineers in-house or consultants looked at requiring any mitigation like a rain garden or biofiltering planter box, for example. Ideally, the device would be sized commensurate with the additional runoff being generated by the proposed increase in impervious cover, i.e. the screen porch roof. So any, any thoughts on that question from Mr. Krasner? And I know this is a work session, so.
Yeah, so in this case, there is no vegetation removed and they even added, I believe, one tree under story and two, two additional trees and additional ground covers. And usually based on our code, the land disturbance, if it is more than 2,500 square foot, we require stormwater management to be added on the plan. But on this case, the land disturbance is less than 2,500 square foot, even though there is additional impervious area. If the plan is, if the land disturbance is less than 2,500 square foot, we don't really actually require them to have any stormwater management facilities.
Yeah, the quality, so for quality, there's no requirement, but we are granting a variance to be able to build this. So I think that's Mr. Krasner's question. Is it, would it make sense to have a requirement for a biofiltering planter box? bio filtering planter box or a rain garden to improve the water quality on the site?
Based on the calculation they submitted at the mitigation plan, uh, this is per the Virginia DEQ standard. And we believe the uh trees they are suggesting, uh, they, they provide equivalent uh water quality uh improvement with other trees in the backyard. Uh, so based on that, uh, they provide, we believe that they provided, uh, those trees are provided equivalent water quality, uh, erosion prevention, uh, uh, and uh lowering the velocity of the runoff before getting into the stream. Uh, so we believe those trees are provided equal amount of uh water quality uh uh improvement with the other trees in the, in the backyard.
Okay.
May I add a quick comment?
Oh, sure. Yes.
The four additional trees and six additional bushes, it's one over story, three under story and six large bushes being added are, were specifically in place of exactly what you're talking about. So when we originally started this over a year ago, we were speaking to Alan about it, Alan Dalton about it, and he said, well, you have choices. You can do exactly what um your note writer asked about. You can do these bio filtering uh water runoff catchers. You can do a couple of rainwater tank or you can plant more trees. And it was presented to us as kind of choose a variety of these things that make the most sense for your particular property, but it has to end up being a sufficient offset. The variety we happen to choose is not what was listed. I personally think that having four more trees is better than having a box.
I would agree.
But that's, it's also where I have to look at it, so.
Great. That's helpful. Thank you. Um, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I would just add that the, uh, pretty much the entire backyard is vegetated.
Yeah.
So it kind of functions as a rain garden already.
Yeah, it, it seems that way.
Yeah.
Uh, all right. Any other questions, comments from Mrs. Killingsworth? Any, any other comments from staff?
Uh, no, thank you.
Yep. So we'll see this again on the nineteenth? Is that right?
Yes, it'll be scheduled for our meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
What's the, if I could ask, would the notification, formal notification of a public hearing of this goes out to neighbors by mail? Is that how you do it?
Um, it, it's a combination. So um, there's a requirement for newspaper ads two consecutive weeks. Um, you're, you're familiar with that with special exceptions and rezonings and this section of the code cited that same advertising requirement. Uh, under that is a, a notice for a mailing. Uh, it wasn't clear to us, but we're gonna do the mailing anyway on this particular case. So the ads have run last Thursday, this Thursday, next Thursday, and then we'll do a upon notice requirements at least five days before. So the note, uh, all the owners within a hundred fifty feet will get a letter um indicating this public hearing on the nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. I think we are looking forward to seeing you on the nineteenth.
Thank you. This is my first time and I apologize.
You did great.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, we're moving on to item seven B, the Quinn site plan. Mr. Fuller, will you introduce this item, please?
Yes, um, we, uh, the applicant um team is here tonight. Um, Laura Arsenault is here as the case planner. Um, so she's prepared to uh introduce this item and uh then we'll have the uh representatives of the team um after that and then the planning commission. Thank you.
Great. Welcome, Ms. Arsenault. Nice to see you.
Hi, thank you. Nice to see you too. Um, tonight I'm here and I am the case planner for the Quinn and Homestretch redevelopment site plan application. I'm here to present the planning commission follow-up and item and responses, a brief summary from the application received on December twentieth, twenty four, and staff analysis of that application. A description of the location begins on line seventy four of the report. The one point eight six acre site is comprised of three existing parcels located at three fifty and three sixty South Washington Street and three oh three South Maple, South Maple Avenue. The recent legislative history on the site begins on line one oh two of the staff report. On February twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, council approved a resolution approving two special exceptions. One, residential uses within a mixed use development and two, an increase in building height with the bonus of up to forty feet to maximum of a hundred and fifteen feet. A summary of the site plan proposal begins on line sixty one of the report. The applicant seeks, seeks a site plan approval to construct a new ten story senior leave, senior living, human care, mixed use building comprised of the following uses. A mixed use building with over two hundred and eighty two thousand square feet, two hundred and thirty three units of human care and continuing care totaling in over two hundred and twenty five thousand square feet, a hundred and forty five independent living units, fifty six assisted living units, and thirty two memory care units. The project also includes medical office, retail, restaurant, and nonprofit uses as well as three hundred and seven parking spaces and a under, partially underground three story garage. With this application, the applicant has submitted a request for minor deviations from the approved special exception as detailed on line ninety three of the report. Such requests are reviewed by the city manager and they may approve minor deviations if they are determined, one, to be necessary, to be necessary to reasonably achieve construction of the project, or two, to improve the project's overall functioning or benefit to the city. These deviations include relocation of the lobby to South Maple Avenue, relocation of the loading and trash area to South Washington Street, building footprint modifications, architectural modifications, increase in retail medical space, and modifications to grading in the streetscape. The minor deviation requests have been considered by the city manager and are still under review. The waivers and modifications, three waivers and modifications have been requested by the applicant and are to be reviewed by the planning commission. A description of these waivers begin on line eighty four of the report. Uh, first, a waiver for the modification of the required loading spaces is requested. Second, the applicant requests a modification for required parking with a reduction of forty six point three percent. And third, the applicant requests a waiver of a hundred foot distance from a vehicular commercial entrance or exit to an R district. Staff recommends that the planning commission waive these three modifications. Staff has completed a review of the revised application materials and recommends the following items be reviewed and refined based on analysis. These items are listed starting on line fifteen of the report. Staff requests review of the in continuation to refine, refine the parking management plan, to refine the design of the nine foot wide bike lane along the northern side of South Maple Avenue, to provide additional sanitary sewer force main plans as needed, to provide a second fire department connection and coordinate the design of the project with the city parklet, and to submit the following items, a comprehensive sign plan, storefront window transparency calculations for ground floor retail, and design details for West Fairfax Park. Since the last planning commission work session on November sixth, twenty twenty four, the applicant has worked with staff to address the following issues. Staff has confirmed that the proposed site plan building in height is in conformance of the special exception. The applicant has revised their architectural design in response to planning commission comments. The crosswalk, for the crosswalk near Gibson Avenue, the developer met with staff and revised the design to shift the crosswalk east to more align with the West Fairfax Linear Park. Please note, there was an error in the staff report that notes the pedestrian refuge, refuge area has been increased. This is incorrect. The, the painted lines on the pavement surrounding the crosswalk have been increased. This, along with the addition of a crossing sign and rapid flashing beacon, proposes to provide a greater visual cue for drivers. The applicant has also provided details of the interior garage drop-off spaces, loading spaces on South Washington, rooftop amenity access, and a transportation demand management plan and a parking demand management plan. Other modifications include a change in design of the plaza to the east of the building and the applicant revised the parking ratio from forty one to forty six point three percent. Moving on for timing, the tentative schedule of the project starts on line six seventy six of the report. After the work session tonight, the applicant will present to the architectural advisory board just scheduled for February twelfth, twenty twenty five, and a subsequent planning commission meeting for final action is tentatively scheduled for March fifth. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Arsenault. Um, any questions or discussion or does the applicant have a presentation?
Um, well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Um, my name is Andrew Painter. I'm a zoning attorney at the law firm of Walsh Calucci, um, working with the Quinn family on uh this mixed use uh special exception site plan. Um, it is good to see everyone. Um, the last time we were before you was in November of last year. There was a very healthy discussion um amongst the commission. Um, a lot of things that we were asked to take a look at and some design suggestions. Um, we are happy to have worked with staff in the ensuing months. I think we're getting down to the sort of the final details. Uh, we've refined the architecture. We've evolved the design in a way that's not only in accordance with the special exception approval, but really does what I think responds to some of the, the suggestions that were made and incorporates them. Um, we've got a presentation. Uh, I'm gonna provide sort of a broader overview. I know we have two new members of the commission. Um, uh, so I'm just gonna sort of speed through some of the, the history of everything. Um, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Marius and Toigan, um, with, uh, SK and I are project architect. Uh, Marius uh deals with the horizontal elements of the building. Uh, Toigan kind of deals with the vertical elements and sort of moving about the site. Uh, and then we'll recognize, um, Scott Hewitt with Red Sketch. They are project landscapers. Uh, and he can talk through some of the changes that have been made uh since we last, um, last appeared before you. Um, just by way of background to orient everyone again, we're dealing with two different parcels. Uh, one is the application property. It's about twenty two thousand square feet, uh, as Ms. Arsenault said. Um, and then, and that is owned by the Quinn family. Uh, there's uh three office buildings that are there. Uh, and then there's the eleven thousand nine hundred square foot Fairfax Street right of way where you have cars parked on there. Uh, and what we are proposing to do is to turn that into a pedestrian um zone for bicyclists and pedestrians to cut between West Annandale Road and South Maple um Avenue. And then you can see South Washington Street on the southern part. Let me see if this works. South Washington Street's uh to the south. So we've got, you know, South Maple Avenue here. Here's Gibson Street that goes into Virginia Village. You have the Fairfax Street right of way, which connects, uh, sort of provides, used to provide a connection uh between Maple and West Annandale Road, which is on um a page right. Um, the property is zoned B two, uh, and in um February of this past year, as staff mentioned, uh, we received special exception approval for a mixed use redevelopment, uh, which includes two hundred and thirty three uh senior housing units, uh, two hundred and eighty two thousand square feet of gross floor area. It will be a lead gold building. Uh, there are commitments for about fifty two thousand square feet of class A commercial spaces. Uh, that is uh divided between um one of the floors being uh office, medical office uses, uh, and then the ground floor uh retail and restaurant spaces. There is also a commitment to provide space about a little over two thousand uh gross square feet for the Tinnerhill Heritage Foundation for a permanent home for them, as well as a commitment to provide about eight hundred square feet for shared public conference spaces for civic association groups, nonprofits, and city boards and commissions. Uh, it's, I think, within the realm of open space that we talked uh so much about during the special exception process uh and in November or uh before this, uh, this body. Um, this project provides substantial open space. Um, about seventy percent uh will be open space in terms of hardscaping and landscaping. About twenty eight percent will actually be landscaping, which is almost twice as much as what is required. And about fifty percent of the total property area will be open to the public, publicly accessible open space. There are, of course, commitments to libraries, parks, uh, stormwater contributions. Uh, we are providing sanitary sewer upgrades to be able to um uh provide additional capacity for the entirety, uh, the entire development area of this South Washington Street city center area. Uh, and then we are providing a series of transportation improvements across the site. Um, here is the um, uh, you know, the um first submission of the site plan, uh, as it has been revised. Um, and just to draw out a couple of things that have been, um, some of the moves that we've made. Um, first, we squared up the building. Um, this was a, a different shaped building when we, when we, when we started. Uh, but we sort of squared up that building. Uh, and then this is kind of what it looks like now. Uh, here's the proposed site plan. So now you can see the sort of the square of the building. And I think if you go back, you can also see that there was a knob down here and you'll also see that you had loading, uh, trash loading as well as a garage entrance here along South Maple Avenue. Um, that has all been um moved to the South Washington Street frontage. And what ended up happening, we moved the wall for the um South Maple Street uh garage to the west. And by moving the loading down to South uh Washington Street, we're able to wedge in another retail bay and move the lobby up there. Uh, and this really goes to a comment that we received, received from council at the time that said that South Maple Avenue should be um this, you know, sort of the walkability, human scale kind of experience for Falls Church residents, whereas South Washington Street has a bit of a different character to it. Um, we also uh moved or straightened and aligned the eastern facade of the building um in order to have sort of a, you know, matching the structural elements above it. There used to be a small knob here, uh, but now it's a much more easy flow as you sort of round this corner. The other thing that we did as well is we got rid of an extensive ramping system here and we found some, you know, some ways to be able to minimize the amount of uh impervious area here and have a much easier flow for people of all accessibility levels um right along this, this area here. Uh, we reduced the step of the southern facade projection, so we got rid of, of that knob there. And what that allowed us to do is to have a, a much better, um, a much easier flowing area that feeds into the park area and sort of rounds this corner, as well as having now retail space here um to be able to communicate visually and physically between these two spaces. Um, by moving the loading dock, dock down here as well, it creates a much, a larger hardscape area that could be closed off. We've talked about food trucks and other types of special events that could occur there. Um, so that's sort of a, just an overview of the overall site plan. And for the two new members of council or commission, you can see uh the connection about, you know, along the Fairfax Street right of way. That'll remain in the city's hands, um, uh, you know, as far as fee simple ownership. Uh, but we will be responsible for the maintenance of it as well as the improvements that, that take place there. So, um, since we appeared before you, a couple of changes and upgrades that Toigan and Marius are going to be, uh, going through, just responding to some of the comments that we received. First, the request for additional perspective images. Uh, we can walk through those. We have those. Uh, we have confirmed that there will be no cementitious siding. I think we talked about that last time, but just to reiterate it. Um, as far as balconies, we had um a request to explore additional balconies on the building. And just to be clear, there are a number of balconies that are on the Maple Avenue frontage and across the property. Uh, but this is not a traditional multifamily project, right? This has independent living, memory care, and assisted living. And so it's not necessarily appropriate in all respects to have, uh, have balconies. But I will say, we have far more balconies than what was originally approved with the special exception uh with what is before you. Um, there was a request to emphasize the lobby entrance now that it's on South Maple as well as the garage entrance. And so you will see that each of those two entrances on South Maple now have their own brand, you know, branding and sort of identity. Uh, similarly, right at the Maple Avenue retail corner, um, you know, right here, um, sort of the main restaurant space. You know, what is the way that we can sort of emphasize that space? Uh, so we've introduced sort of a small bump out. Uh, we're creating sort of facade articulation. Um, so to have sort of a different experience, sort of a four season experience uh that we hadn't had before on this project. But the emphasis really is on rich articulation of the ground floor experience around the building, but especially there. Um, and then last but not least, uh, from an architectural perspective, what does this South Washington Street facade kind of look like? So we removed this knob here. Um, and I will just say too, there's no backside to the building. Uh, we have a very public frontage on at least three sides of the building. Uh, we have two roads uh to the north and to the south. Um, but what we've done is have a much more functional plaza, as I mentioned. It is much more inviting, much more pedestrian friendly. Uh, and as I said too, there is that's, that's common visual language now as you turn the corner because we've been able to relocate or locate the, um, the retail there. Um, Scott will talk about the, um, the landscaping changes that have been made. Um, but, and we have sort of close-ups as well, and they're kind of in black and white. Uh, they're not rendered because the black and white kind of shows much more detail from a line drawing perspective. So you'll see that. Uh, but there have been revisions to the parks, uh, and then changes around along the South Maple Avenue frontage and the Washington Street Plaza frontage based on some of the comments that staff had made, uh, that are noted in your staff report. Um, there are comments uh that we received regarding transportation. As Ms. Arsenault mentioned, due to engineering issues, we, you know, we cannot do a raised medium pedestrian refuge, which I think is exactly what we all wanted to see when this thing was approved. We've met with the fire marshal. We've looked at the engineering of it. We have the drawings and um Karen White with Walter Alphillips can kind of walk through why we haven't been able to provide that raised pedestrian uh refuge. We also looked at doing a raised pedestrian crosswalk. Similar issues um with respect to maintenance and what we, what's allowed. If we could do it, we would absolutely find, try to find a way to, to make that happen. Uh, but we've, we've kind of run that to ground to the degree. But we've kind of run that to ground to the degree that we can. We are going to extend the South Maple Avenue sidewalk. There's the series of very large blocks, like concrete blocks, as you go towards the Henderson House and, you know, heading towards the Reserve at Tinnerhill. We're going to rebuild a portion of that, a small portion of that eastward. The city design standards, let me see. That's an issue, you know, we have a bunch of brick that you can see here right along South Maple Avenue. And it used to be a long time ago that everybody wanted to have brick. So you can see the original special exception approval was nothing but brick. There have been issues that have been associated with the bricks being uneven, accessibility issues, tripping hazards and the like. So city staff in conjunction with council has been looking, as you all know, at increasing, you know, concrete, for example, and having those cement sidewalks instead of brick. The bottom line is our special exception conditions allow for, you know, either eventuality. And we will go with whatever staff and city councils or, you know, whatever the city tells us to, as far as that goes. One other thing that's not on here as far as transportation was the striping of the bike lane on South Maple. It's a fairly wide condition on South Maple as you come down from the bowling alley and, you know, head to the stop sign at Tinnerhill Road. We have a nine-foot area where the bike lane could be striped. There was a concern from staff that it should not be seen as a parking zone. So we will work with staff on striping and signage to make sure it cannot be, you know, it's, you know, to dissuade people from using that as a parking zone and blocking the, blocking the bike lane. Ms. White can talk through the sanitary sewer updates. And actually, I defer to staff on that. That's something that still is under review with the city manager's office and trying to execute the agreement with Fairfax County. But I understand that's going to, you know, that's heading in a great, you know, very good direction and hopefully be wrapped up in the next month or so. Fire marshal, we did meet with the fire marshal. Received a lot of good comments that will help us in our building code review. Nothing too substantive as it affects the site plan, but overall good comments. There was one request that we provide two fire department connections. There will now be one on South Maple and one on South Washington. We made minor tweaks to the transportation demand management plan to update it, but really nothing substantive there. And then, as Ms. Arseneau noted, we have our site plan minor deviation letter under review by the city manager and by staff. So with that, I'm going to stop talking. That's an overview of kind of what we're going to get into. I'll turn it over to Toigan and Marius to walk through the architecture. So whoever wants to come on up. And here's the quick room.
Good evening. My Marius are at risk with SK and I and my colleague Toigan. But I think that Andrew covered everything, so it's nothing for me to add. Anyway, so we are going to run to a few slides that show what has been approved and the improvements that we made to the architecture. So on the left-hand side is the special exception. This will be the South Maple Street facade. And so this is the, let's say, the old existing, and this is the proposed. But here is a detail of what we are proposing, including the improvements that we have made since the last time. And there were a few comments about how the base of the building, oops, sorry. How the base of the building was reading. And around now, we changed the chromatic of the brick from what it was before, and it's a darker brick, therefore allowing this zone, which encompass, which includes the retail portion here, to be more separated from the rest of the building. On this area is the main entrance, and it has its own distinct appearance. So it's clearly identified. And there is a clear separation of the two main areas of the retail and residential portion. One of the comment was also if we can incorporate stronger horizontal elements. And we had one, but wasn't reading very well. We have a cornice that sits above the base of the building right here. And then we introduced two new ones on top of this townhouse readings that we have on the lower portion of the building. By the way, the massing of the building, this line, the setback, they are the, well, actually, they increase a bit from the previous scheme. So the volume or the massing of the building, the envelope, is pretty much identical to what has been approved.
Can I just ask one question? On that last picture, the, that was the Maple Street facade or the Fairfax?
This is the Maple Street, the South Maple Street facade.
Thank you.
This is the eastern facade that is facing the park. And here, again, the same improvements that probably next slide, well, again, on the left is one has been, one has been approved. And this is our proposed improvement. And this is a view from, that will be the northeast corner. So South Maple is here. And this is the park facade. So one of the comment is that on the previous scheme, there was a projection of the building on this area, which originally we eliminated. But now we reintroduce that projection for the retail, again, to create this more articulated in-and-out experience. And maybe we hope that this pavilion will be a nice addition to the retail, will create sort of a greenhouse that if you have tables inside, then you, you are be, you feel like more being in the park. So on the, when the weather is nice, obviously you have outdoor tables. But when the weather is, like tomorrow is going to be, for instance, you can still have a nice experience and feel the nature, but be protected. You see as a detail this cornice that we have on this facade too. And the darker brick that, that forms the base of the building with the retail that now wraps the corner from the entrance all the way to the back. And this is the office space. This is a detail of that retail pavilion. You see the projection. And as we move around, this is the, will be the southeast corner. So this will be if you stand on South Washington Street here, well, it goes diagonal a little bit, you would see the retail wrapping around. What we did from the last time, we brought this, let's call it a tower element, down. So we're stopping here, this elevation, but then we brought it down. So what this element does, it creates a terminal point and a focal point for the retail, but also creates a visual separation between the loading area and the retail. This is the south elevation. And again, the change from the last presentation is this tower. This element that mirrors what happens here comes down to pin the building down. Again, it creates that terminal point for the retail and creates a sort of, adds to this buffer zone between the loading and the garage and the retail. And this is the perspective, again, South Washington Street will be this way. This is the curb cut into the loading area. And you see the retail portion and again, this architectural element that separates the two different programs. And this will be the west elevation, again, the existing, the approved facade on the left-hand side and the proposed on the right-hand side. And this is the view. What, I think that what we changed, we moved the location of this garden pavilion. So this is a accessible area amenity for the residents from both wings of the, of the building. And that opens up in the back, so beyond into the courtyard. So that is other improvement that we did. This exhibit shows the setbacks of the building. So this is a section cut this way, this South Maple Street will be here. So it's cut this way, looking west. And you can see the profile of the old building. The new building is pushed in additional five foot, I believe. And then I think the setback was around eight foot, and right now is about nine foot four, nine foot six. So this area moved further back. You can see as a half-tone or shadow line, this is the existing proposed plane of the facade. And this is the new one. So it's quite a way back. And you can see here the existing and the existing, the approved and the proposed. In terms of the materials, we are trying to stay almost exactly to what has been approved. In terms of chromatics, of course, in the renderings, there are some deviations. And, you know, brick as a natural element will have some variations in it. But then we do have the same chromatic. So it's a darker brick base. Then we have a combination of brick and metal panel, lighter red brick. And this is an example of what these elements put together are. Then we have a lighter tone gray and then a off-white top. So as was mentioned, we don't have any cement, cementitious panel. It's all solid materials, either brick or composite metal panels. So there's no vinyl, no hardy panels or anything like that. And this will be again, a metal panel that maybe works as a wood accent and maybe in these areas that you see interlaced with a brick. Maybe we do have some ground face block, which again is a solid masonry wall that will work at the base, a darker brick and lighter red brick, again, a gray brick, and then terracotta-like metal panel. And then the gray metal panels and the very light or off-white metal panel. And I think that this is the last slide, I believe, of the architecture.
Which one is that?
So this is up-down and this is the lazy.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see everyone again. We're going to kind of focus on a few of the areas that we really looked at for the changes to the site from the last plan. So this is what we presented before. And, you know, with the building changing, you know, flip-flopping the entrance from down here to up here and then creating this zone here, we got a lot of feedback from staff and others to look at this even further. So the last submission, so this is the black and white version. I didn't have time to render it yet. But you could see the improvements here, South Washington entrance here. So the plaza before, the comments were saying, you know, it was kind of a large concrete space. And so we were trying to find ways to break it up and create more pedestrian access. And one of the big moves we did was really emphasizing this east-west. And one of the comments was to connect this parklet, the future parklet. And so now the pedestrians can cross this way and come in through here. And the vehicles can come right in here and the loading right here. But then also this plaza, by kind of defining, it's hard to see here, but a much more detailed paving pattern in the concrete. So this is all flush, but you can, you know, kind of like either it delineates where people will drive into the building, where there's possible drop-off. You can turn around here. And then this is the loading. And then when it's not being used, if we want to ever close this off and create a, you know, have some kind of event here, it can be that also. But yeah, like now, the other thing was that the retail was wrapping the building before, and then we had some kind of landscape and it was very choppy. So now, now we really have a continuous path. And it's all pedestrian level, accessible. So there's no barriers to getting around the building. And then when we move to the east side. I want to be a little more left. Anyway, we can go. So, so on the east side, it really, the big difference was, again, connection from north to south along this whole plaza. And then that way, the retail can really relate to the plaza, and then the plaza now can relate to the park. And we were able to, with the building changing, we were able to get rid of, on the southeast corner, we were able to get rid of all the ramps and stairs. So now we only have to, for this whole grade change, some stairs here and then stairs here, and there is a ramp down here. But now, when you come down Maple, you can come down here and wrap the whole building all on level, all in grade, all accessible. You know, the public sidewalk goes up with Maple, falls Maple. And then now this goes down to get back downgrade on the east side of the building. And one of the other comments we got was that, here's the new entrance to the building, and we wanted to connect it to the street, to Maple. So we created a stair here. And then the same here on the corner, you'd be able to come across the crosswalk and get right down to this level. Or it's connected right to the linear park now that we created. So now there's different ways to enter the site, more pedestrian access than we had before. Before, this whole corner was kind of a block, and you had to come around it and come back down to get to the retail. So now we have a more continuous retail experience for the whole building. I think, and one of the other things, I don't know if we can go back. The, you could see now here on this side here, this is just a regular walk coming down. And here's the ramp straight here, and then here's the one stair. That's all there is now to get down to this grade. And we were able to increase the park. So we increased the green space, the physical green space in front of the pavilion here. So now this is a very flexible, usable space. And so all the improvements we did really created, I think, a better pedestrian experience for everyone.
I think that's it. We appreciate the indulgence. And then our team is available in certain questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all so much. Any questions, comments, discussion, Mr. Polinsky?
I wasn't begging to go first, but...
Your eyebrows on me, so...
I was wondering if there's any imagery or renderings of what the building would look like at night in terms of lighting in the building or lighting around the outside of the building?
We don't, we don't have a nighttime image.
Okay.
But we do have a lighting...
But we do have a lighting plant, yeah, that's true.
Okay.
And then we also have commitments and the voluntary concessions to have all the lighting be downward and shielded to the interior of the property.
Okay. And then additionally, like you had talked about the pathway across the loading dock, or the walkway across the loading dock. Is there any plan there in terms of how to notify pedestrians walking across there of trucks or vehicular traffic coming out of the loading dock? So that they're aware of, like, I know there was a piece in here about wayfinding signs and things like that coming later, but in terms of that new change to this, is there any expectation of like how to notify pedestrians?
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, we'll be adding that to our comprehensive sign plan that we'll be submitting separate from this, but yes.
Okay, alright. I can keep going. Does anybody want to?
Yeah, you can keep going.
I was wondering, like, in terms of, with the change of the building being focused on Maple as opposed to on Washington, or the front of the building being on. Sorry, I know you were talking about it, that's why I'm looking at you. But I meant, like, anybody can answer. How does, like, as traffic comes down Washington, which is the more vehicular street, or the street with more vehicular traffic, what is the expectation for how they get? I know there's, I know there is a garage entrance there. But like, how do you imagine them getting all the restaurants, all the things they want to go to on the Maple Avenue side? How did, what is the expectation for how they get? How did, what is the expectation for how they get notified or how they find out, oh, I've driven past the thing I want to go to, now I've got to go down to somewhere and get a, like, how do they know they're supposed to get to that side?
There may eventually be a sign here, there's two entrances, so they can come here or they can just go down here to Wallace and come in this way.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm going to show it to you again. What's your, come on up.
We, we never envisioned Washington Street being the back facade, actually. It's, we have three or four primary facades in the building and we wanted the experience to be one and the same for everyone, for abled and disabled alike. So we removed the knob from the Washington Street side, so the future parklet and our park can connect seamlessly, barrier free. And we created a sort of uniform sidewalk level experience for everybody, barrier free, so that they can experience it. For wayfinding, I think we made it easier for people to pull in. As you'll remember, there was a big knob that, that extended out to the Washington Street side where it limited people's ability with vehicles to pull in, drop off and then maybe get out. They, they had to go into the garage to do whatever they had to do. But with proper signage to, Andrew's point, with proper signage, once you're there once, I think it'll be super easy for you to weather with a vehicle to go in and if your intention is to park in the garage, you can. If your intention is to drop off someone, you can pull in for a minute and then turn around. That's also much easier. You wouldn't have to back out to the traffic, so to speak. Or you can pick somebody, even though we're not endorsing it, we have a pick up and drop off area inside the garage. It's just much more cohesive, connected, whether you're accessing with vehicles or you're on foot and the pedestrian just want to explore the little parklet or what's around the building, everything seems to be seamless to working together. That's, that was the goal.
Got it. And then what is the address of the building? Like, if you're, if you're in an Uber, like, where does it take you?
The building address itself.
Is it Maple?
Is on Maple.
Okay.
And the official drop off is inside the garage, where you drop off right by the lobby entrance, the, from the garage. The retailers, depending on where the retailer, the Maple facing retail will have the Maple address. And then as you get to the south towards Washington, a couple of those retail spaces will have the Washington Street address if I'm...
Like the park next to Washington Street?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I love all the tree coverage, like, I think it's great to have as much shading as humanly possible there, especially with what our last summer was like. Is the amphitheater, is that covered? That's a covered amphitheater?
And then like, you know, kind of like two walls holding up the roof.
Okay. But otherwise open air?
Yeah, and then behind you can see all the landscaping, so when you're sitting in the park looking at it, you see green behind it.
Okay. So my only question is, like, in terms of people, and I'm fixated on the traffic, but like, as people coming down Washington Street, being able to see the bill, like, I'm looking for, go to restaurant A, like, I'm excited to go to restaurant A, it's great stuff. I think the thing I'm concerned about is generating a bunch of extra traffic of people get, like, turning down Wallace or coming down that direction or going down further, looping around, I don't know what's this, Maple, I think it's Maple at the bottom, like, looping back up Maple all the way down, past where Creative Cauldron is now or will be for another week or two. And like, causing extra traffic in the neighborhood around the other buildings. Like, somehow figuring a way to put signage in a place or make it visible to see, oh, there's the restaurant I'm trying to get to as people come from either Arlington or they come up and try to make a left onto Anadale, like, in that place. Because I think, sort of coming back to the pedestrian concept, like, since there's no bump out there, people are going to like swing in hard. My concern would be people would swing in, driving into that entrance right there or coming down and doing through the neighborhood, getting in the way of pedestrians who are trying to, to get around in that area. So as you think about signage, that would be the thing that would be most concerning to me is like, I'm going to drive by it because I'm not going to see it. Like you said, once I've been there once, I know where it is. But hopefully lots of people are coming.
I think that's a great point. Our intention with removing the knob, one of the, one of the reasons was to allow for both vehicles and pedestrians to exist together on the Washington side. There's, there's enough room where you can pull in and not cause back, backing up in the traffic, but also stay short of going all the way in where pedestrians may be meandering between the park and...
Sort of a question, is parking going to be paid or is parking free?
It's free.
Free?
It's not going to be metered.
So more in the question that people are not going to be like, oh no, like at Founder's Row or something, I'm going to see these big signs that say I've got to pay, I can't drop anybody, I can't pull in here to drop off.
Right. And then also Scott just pointed out, one of the things he was not able to show here, but he did put in with the redesign of this, this will be where a sign, a monument sign would be.
Substantial enough sign for to talk about the whole problem.
Okay. And then sort of last point, I'll, I'll stop talking. The, the way, the build, if we can go back to the exterior view of the building.
Perspective.
This is fine, sort of like, with the new post special, the special exception view onto the proposed view, like, it looks very nice, like, it's not bad at all. I think the interesting thing about this building is that it gets to define basically what all the other buildings, as Washington Street continues to be redeveloped, like, this is going to be, they're all going to say, well, Quinn did this, so we're just matching what exists. And I would challenge like this to see if there's a way to make a unique false church, I don't want to call it look and feel, but like, a thing, a piece of art, a design element that would be, when the rest of the buildings come back and say, we did it like this, add some, some color, add some uniqueness to the whole thing. I mean, it's very nice, like, I'm not, I am, I build websites for a living, like, I can't do this. But I meant more in the sense of like, as somebody who is coming to false churches, I, I see I'm in, I see this as something different, it's not Clarendon, it's not something like that. That's my thoughts.
Yes. I, I hear what you're saying. While it sounds easy, it's pretty difficult.
Yeah, that's why I get to sit up here and ask you that.
Yeah. I mean, I think it, it, it asks for more, more thinking than, than what I could just...
Right, that's fair.
Whether it's with artwork or whether it's for use of colors or a combination of both.
Was, was, sorry, question, was there plaza artwork in the special exception that went away in the proposed one? No, it's still there?
It's all there.
Okay. I didn't see it. I didn't see it in the proposed. Alright, I'll stop talking now. Thanks for answering the question.
We'll go down the line, Mr. Duncan, you're next.
Thank you very much. Maybe the courtyard or the plaza could, that's the place where the sculpture presumably will go, you know, we could relocate the pig statue from what used to be Don Meyer over there and that would be the pigs. That would be false churchy. Okay, I've got several notes here, but I'll not touch on all my questions because others will probably have more to say about the architecture, which, thank you for all the refinements that you've made and some pretty substantial changes, which I think are, I think are for the better. To go back, the in and out and parking and dropping off experiences where I'd like to focus my attention because I seem to spend a lot of time these days doing all those things at various doctors' offices and hospitals and so forth. So that experience is, you know, stressful for the first time that you visit, so signage and access and parking for handicaps and so forth is something that this building in particular needs to get right because that's the whole purpose of this building, right? I mean, you've got older folks, people going to the doctor, you know, the ground floor retail, of course, has its own show, but most people who are driving to this building probably are going to be coming in looking for medical services. So to that, one specific question. So the, the place where we have now designated on South Washington Street for trash loading in the circle and so if I'm, if I'm dropping off somebody there to go to the doctor, where are they going once they get dropped off? The lobby is now on South Maple, right? So is there some access point that's different from where I see the cars going in and out?
I'm glad you brought that up because that's, that was our experience when my wife was pregnant and we would go to doctors' offices and we would go into the garage and we wouldn't find our way into the elevator lobby.
Right.
To save our lives. So I know that experience firsthand. But I think, I don't know what I did. So, how do I like this? Yeah. So you, you could be driving on South Maple or you could be driving on South Washington if you're going to a doctor's appointment, I'm assuming you know the address or you know where you're going. Once you're inside the garage, this is the area that you would be parking on at the ground level as you enter. You wouldn't be necessarily going down the ramp. And once you park here, the elevator lobby is right here. Like you, that would be signage to, to bring you in, but immediately it may be next to where you park. The direct access to the building lobby from the garage side.
Okay, alright.
Wanted to simplify that experience that you, that you just were referring to. How do I, how do we move people from the parking to the elevators, to the elevator lobby so they can get up to where they're getting out quickly and efficiently and without having to ask too many questions?
Okay, so that's part one of my question. Part two is what happens if somebody accidentally, you know, some Uber driver drops me off at the trash unloading, you know, garage entrance there that you got indicated on the South Washington side? Is there a walkable, am I walking through the garage to get to that lobby from, from, in other words, am I traversing the, the building to get to the lobby on the South Maple side?
Yeah, ideally not. Ideally not the garage. But like we said, from here all the way out is, is a pretty straightforward and flat area. What this plan is not showing actually is we have a piseo in the middle of this red retail block. Where the piseo, if your intention was to go inside the building to garage or the lobby through the piseo, once you're in the park or vice versa. Like if, if you parked, but you have a few minutes before your doctor's appointment, you can take that piseo into the park and enjoy the park or retail and you can take the piseo back and go to the lobby and take your elevator up to your apartment. But this is, this plan is not the, I guess, not...
Okay, well, I think that's...
There's an access.
Yeah, that's, that's responsive to my question. I mean, you're right, the first time you visit any of these places, you have no idea where you're going and the signs are terrible and after that, you've got it figured out and you can find your way into this approach that you're talking about, from either South Washington or South Maple, if you just have whoever's carrying you or yourself park in the parking area there in the garage that you've indicated. And presumably that's where a heavy concentration of the handicapped accessible, you know, marked spaces are. Basically, if you're, if you're going to one of the restaurants and you're driving, hopefully most people will be walking. But if you're going to one of the restaurants, you probably are going to go down a ramp and, and it's sort of like at Founder's Lawn, you know, I mean, there's, or Broad and Washington, you know, if you're, if you're going to patronize some amenity there that's non-medical, you're going to have a little bit more of an adventure, you know, figuring out exactly where to park that's closest. Okay, enough of that. A couple other things, thank you for the no cementitious materials on behalf of former Mayor Dave Tarter, he thanks you. My job is to keep that memory alive. The streetscape city standards brick, I didn't, I'm not quite sure where council is landing on this. I somehow believe I recall hearing discussion that you all were going to be the test case of not using very much brick. Has that changed or is that basically where we are?
No, that's accurate and I think it's a, you know, it's concrete with sort of a ribbon band of brick around it. And we'll be adding that to our minor deviation letter to receive approval for.
Okay, alright, good. Transportation management plan. I'm not, I'm having lived in the council lane for a while, I'm not sure if some of these things are necessarily applicable to site plan approval, but since somebody mentioned the transportation management plan, what we've learned from the Kensington and other health-related buildings is that the staff are more prone to need to drive to their jobs because they work odd shift hours, they work two jobs, they're going to get from one to the other. This creates a demand for parking for the staff. I think we'll be okay on the units because there will be a, obviously some people will not have cars at all. Most of the independent living seniors might have one car, maybe some of them don't have a car either. But the commercial retail and service medical staff, how confident are we that, that we are sufficiently parked?
You know, this has been one issue that has been brought up routinely. Ariel Jarvis with Grove Slate, I don't know if you're available online, but you have done some revisions to the parking or to the transportation demand management plan as well as our parking management plan. So we had to submit both of those. And so Ariel, I don't know if you're around, if you want to speak to the issue at all?
Yeah, sure. And this is probably more relevant to the shared parking study that we did. And so we actually did account for one parking space per staff member when we did our shared parking analysis. So we are kind of accounting for that worst case scenario of one car per staff member generating parking demand at the site.
Okay. I think that's good. I mean, it may not be good for the world, but you know, just the reality of where we are and the times we're in has suggested that folks who are working in those jobs have greater mobility needs and less flexibility than some of us who can walk places and so forth. So I think that's good. Okay, a bunch of other stuff, but I don't want to take up all the time. Let me just ask about, you mentioned also the rooftop access. I know we talked some time ago about the nature of the rooftop amenity. Have you all thought any further about that and, you know, how, what shape and form it might take access to it, et cetera?
We, we have a rooftop plan. And I don't know if, Scott, if we, if we've got this in the deck, I think we do, I think it's the next to last slide. Yeah, so this is the rooftop amenity plan. This is unchanged from what we, what we showed before. And for the new members that are here, just to let you know, this is for, you know, for the patrons, everything that you sort of see, you can see a large green roof area, but then there's some hardscape area as well, which we would like to introduce potentially a partnership with the restaurants downstairs or to have a food truck, similar to what you see at Star Hill over in Tyson's Corner. But as far as, you know, marketing this, we, we're just not at that point right now. So conservatively speaking, it'll just be open to the residents of the building. Optimistically speaking, we would have another user up there and this would be a really neat attraction for everybody, so.
Okay, alright, two other quick things. The Forest Main for the sewage, I assume that, you know, the manager spoke to this, I think at some recent meeting, you know, wheels are turning, deal with Fairfax, et cetera. So your process here is going to travel concurrently with that. I mean, we probably, hopefully will land a deal with Fairfax or whoever we need to deal with on Forest Main soon and you all will know that when you come to us the next time? Is that sort of what we're thinking?
I think so. And I don't know if Mr. Fuller or Ms. Arson have any updates at all to share, but for the staff.
No, that I'm still pending, we don't have any updates, but it's, it's been on several agendas of late, so it's being worked on.
Okay, alright. And finally, the heights of the building, which is something of interest to the community. Does it have to be 10 stories? How many residential stories are there? Seven is basically the, most of the units, what are they scattered? So basically each floor is roughly something like 30, 35, 40 units per floor?
I can't hear you.
Roughly.
Yeah. Yes, yes, so roughly.
Okay. 330, so roughly, okay. You know, my response to that, I don't know what you all feel about, you know, oh, can't we make it nine stories? Does it have to be? Does it have to be 10? Is every, every story that we knock off is 30 to 40 individuals or, you know, couples or people in medical need who are not being able to be served in the City of Falls Church. And for me, that's a fair trade. To be able to help more people who are in the, you know, later years probably, live in the City of Falls Church where many of them probably have lived for decades argues for me that that 10-story is, is not only required but desired.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's, and, and what's unique about this is it's a continuum of care within the same building. So it's five levels of independent living, two levels of assisted and one level of memory care. So you're able to move between the different floors depending on whatever your needs are. Then it's, you know, the bottom part is the ground level retail and in between that is the medical office. So we think we're trying to fire on all cylinders. We think this is, you know, something that's successful. You're not going to find an argument with me about the height. You know, it seems to make sense and I think lands this in a, in a pretty good spot in the South Washington Street corridor that you've arrived in the city, so.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Mr. Stevens?
Sure, thank you. I'll probably have just a few follow-ups because I think most of the issues that I had have kind of been touched on. Regarding signs, is there a sign plan under development and will that be submitted to the Architectural Advisory Board?
It will be, yes.
Prior to our final vote on site plan?
Not prior to the final vote on the site plan. Do what?
It will be ready by next week.
No, it won't be ready by then. When is it going to be submitted?
Tomorrow.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're going to get it in the door tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be helpful for us to, to have another group take a look at that. I'm sure some of our members should probably do that as well. I was a little confused about the whole sanitary sewer situation. I know you just mentioned that the discussions are continuing and that, you know, what's the anticipation of what we'll have on the planning commission before we take our final vote? Will these issues be resolved? I mean, that would be my preference as opposed to saying, well, we're close and can you give us authority to approve of something, you know, while you take your vote? I guess I'm hoping that we can get, I know the issues are complicated, but I'm hoping we can get those resolved before we take our final vote.
I think it's, you know, it's at the city manager level at this point. It's kind of out of our hands. We've, we've known probably the whole time this application's been in that we've, we're, this was one of the major issues of this application, so.
Yeah.
But, and, and just to clarify, and Karen White with Walter Phillips can also specify this too. I mean, it's our intention to force main it up to Arlington and not rely on Fairfax and, you know, in the hopes of that. So it shouldn't be dependent upon whatever deal is struck with Fairfax. But Karen, are you on by any chance?
Yep, I'm here.
Can you elaborate just a little bit on, on the process for dealing with sanitary sewer from the property?
Right, so the plan actually shows both designs. It does show the flow that by gravity through Fairfax or to the Fairfax direction and it does show the force main design pumping to Arlington. So both are included. So kind of what, I guess whichever way moves forward, they're both shown on the, the site plan.
We have to pick one, so.
Yes, yes.
So I guess that sounds like it's kind of a city decision that we're waiting on right now?
And I believe during approval, it defaulted to Arlington unless the county, unless the city made a decision to go to Fairfax. So I believe it's defaulting to Arlington right now unless the city changes their mind. There also is a voluntary concession, thank you, Henry, that said, "The owner understands the site plan approvals contingent on prior city approval of design for the sanitary sewer facility, sanitary sewer facility improvements." So, I mean, we're waiting. That's the answer.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to anticipate that most of the people on the commission are going to want to see a solution before we, you know, kind of take our final vote. One thing I was a little unclear, it says, "Force main plans may be submitted as plans separate from the site plan." I was a little confused by that. Why is that? How can that be separate?
Is that a DRC comment?
I'm sorry?
Is that one of the DRC comments?
It is. It's line 29 of the staff report.
I think that's, might be an error, 29. I think it means separate from the actual site plan because I need to go to the state, the Hailu Shit of State, no, I'm kidding.
Which is another step. It sounds like you need state approval as well.
Yeah, there's a complicated, and the applicant knows this, is we're getting a checklist from the sanitary sewer of what exactly is needed for sanitary sewer review, for the force main review. Force main plans may be submitted as plans separate from the site plan, however they require, next to the DRC review. So there's something that the sanitary sewer folks need that, to be submitted. So it's the force main plans they need to see before the next DRC review. But it shouldn't be submitted separately. I'm sorry, that's a mistake. It shouldn't be separate, it's part of the site plan.
Yeah. I guess for purposes of tonight, more to follow, I think is, is what I'm hearing.
It's a sitting and waiting game, yes, thank you.
Okay.
We'll run this to ground. It'll, it'll, it'll be tanned, so.
I know, we're, we're not trying to solve all the storm, you know, the sanitary sewer issues in the city. We're focused on this site, but I think, my guess is we're going to want something that looks pretty clean as far as a, as a, as a solution before we can, before we can vote. Yep. There's mention of a minor deviation request. Is there a plan, will we have that before our vote as well?
Yes, we have run the minor deviation request and draft letter by the city manager, but we wanted to leave it open for review before final signature, but that will happen before the commission approves.
All right. Appreciate your attention to the bike lane on North Maple and doing some work on that to make sure it doesn't get taken as parking or whatever, so thanks for that. Last comment I had, had to do with the bird-friendly glass. This was a comment that somebody had raised. I noticed that Kurt Lawrence from staff and his comments, October 23, 24, mentioned that bird-friendly glass will be provided up to 36 feet. Additionally, no glass hardware, handrails or building up lighting will be provided, which is good, you know, I appreciate that. What I'm wondering is, is there some kind of a standard? I, I don't know if it exists or not, but is there some kind of a standard that deals with this issue that would be helpful as, in providing some guidance?
I can ask Kurt, Mr. Lawrence, I can ask him. He's our environmental planner, so I'm assuming...
Yeah, we really haven't done this before and I, it's, it's something that often gets raised, but we don't seem to have a lot of knowledge about it, so I think, you know, it might be helpful if there is some kind of a standard or some kind of a guidance to say, here's, here's how you do it.
Is there bird-friendly design?
It's generally fritting within the glass and I think there's the American Bird Threat Detection Organization that they, they provide suggestions and things, but generally between eight and 36 feet in height is what's generally accepted. But there's just different, you know, different ways you can incorporate bird-friendly glass. Sometimes the bird-friendly approach is to have trees which block the actual building. Sometimes it's additional brick, so.
Yeah, like you say, it's, it's kind of a new thing and something that's been ignored in the past, so I appreciate that you've made an effort to, to look at that. I know it was one of the voluntary concessions, but I think that's all I had.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Ms. Friedlander?
Thank you. So I first want to say, I, I really appreciate all the work that has really gone into this. This is, next to construction, this is my favorite part when we start to really see the development of the design and, and by flip-flopping some of those programmatic elements, I think that really helps the success of this project in addition to cleaning up those grades and the undulations that you've added back into that plaza area. But I do want to just make note, the, I think, most specifically, I appreciate the separation of the verticals and the new proportionality of those window openings. I think it's much more sophisticated than the original special exception. The special exception just showed a bunch of squares and I think what we're, what we're seeing now is a lot more play on those proportions, which is really what I was asking for, so I, I want to thank you for that. Because I think it, it breaks down the mass of that building and it starts to identify by volume what is happening inside rather than it just being kind of this, almost arbitrary set of proportional rules which were on it before. So I do, I, I can see how much has developed in the last couple months and, and I really appreciate that. I did want to ask a question about the lobby entrance off of South Maple. And it's hard from the renderings that we got in our package, but I think I saw it in, in one of these. Is there a canopy or something that kind of announces its presence out there? Because it's hidden in the trees and the elevations that we see, but I think I saw something, so I want to kind of understand what that portal looks like.
Slide 10. Oh, slide 10 on my file. Slide 9.
Yeah.
So you see this area that's a canopy projecting out and a good portion of the side door, eight foot or so.
Okay.
Which also holds a sign. So that's that identifying piece and area, you can open your umbrella or close your umbrella or wait for somebody, wait for the cab, protect it from the rain.
That's what I was, I was, I was hoping that's what that was because I was looking for it in the renderings that, but the trees kind of mask it and so I was wondering, well, where's the there, there? But now I see it and I think you'll be able, I think pedestrians will be able to see that and find their way with having that pronounced lobby entrance. I would, I would want to understand a little bit, you said that there was a passageway or paseo from the park side. So if you got dropped off on South Washington and you had to traverse around the park and there's a paseo and what, because it, it's hard to tell again from the renderings, like what, how is that pronounced? Because I just see a kind of a retail, but it's hard to know that that would be your entry into that main lobby.
So it's shown on our model, like construction document model, but it's going to be around this area. I'm not 100% sure where the demising wall is, but it's aligned with the south end of the elevator lobby, so I think it is around this area. So basically, as you come from south, you are able to travel half a way through and then you can go in.
Okay.
And that connects all the way to the garage, so you can have a shortcut to the garage too.
That's, I think that's helpful. I think if there's a wayfinding method that's not just a sign, like something spatial or canopy or something like that. Because I think even in the paving pattern, like I like what you guys did on that plaza to kind of give some directionality to how people can drop off now in that area just by the introduction of that little circle, right? Like, I mean, it's so simple, but it's, it, it speaks volumes that people will now understand how to do that and you don't need signs for it, right? So I, so if you can think about, think about that on the, on this side too, just to kind of help pull people in in case they get dropped off on the wrong side. I think you answered all of that. For the sanitary, I did have some questions. There were a lot of, a lot of calculations and I'm not a storm, I'm not a sanitary engineer, but I was, I was curious, there's the pump station, it looks like it's underneath the Triangle Park, that the force pump, like the main pump station would be underneath the Triangle Park that's on Annandale and South Washington? It's in the first set of packets in the Civils and I...
So you're talking about under here?
No, no, I think it, the force main, it goes up Rolling Road and across, right? Oh, is it underneath Rolling Road?
Right there.
Okay.
Yeah, Karen?
So, yeah, the, the actual pump station is adjacent to the building, kind of under the corner, you see where it says typical sculptural shade structures kind of right at the, and I'm sorry if you're pointing, I can't see, but right at the southeast corner of the building, there's like an underground vault, we'll say, that's adjacent to the garage. It's where the pump station would actually be because it has to be powered from the garage and things like that. So that's where the station is, but then the piping does run, you know, down that, that Linear Park walkway and through, on Fairfax and then, you know, down up to Arlington. But the actual pump is adjacent to the building, not...
Okay, thank you.
There are some vaults, so there are vaults in, like in the streets in some, a couple locations, so that might be the structure that you see. And the reason there are some vaults in some locations is that if there's future developments that have to connect to the force main, that vault provides a place where those connections could come in in the future.
That's great. Thank you for, thank you for including that in the, in the force main plan if we, if we end up going that way. It's, it looks like it's, it can accommodate all the kind of pending and future developments that are happening in this small area plan, except when we get to the, to that line on Fairfax where it starts to go back down on a, on a gravity. So I'm just asking that staff keep that on the radar for the next time one of the other developments comes online, that we, we have a provision or a voluntary concession that they start to upgrade the diameter for that. Because it looks like, and again, I don't, I don't know, but looking at some of those calculations, it looks like we're coming up in the negatives once we're fine for this development and we're fine for all of the future small area plans in the force main diameter, it looks like. And I'm, I'm curious if staff has evaluated that, but when we get to where they're tying into what's going to remain on, on Fair, is it Fairfax Road? Like, where they stop the new diameter, right? And it's, I think it's where the slope changes so that everything turns into gravity. I think that diameter is not, it, it doesn't look like the calculations for future beyond this development are going to be accommodated in that diameter. So if we can just keep that on the radar for all the future developments that we're looking at, like Maple and Annandale and, you know, all these other ones that are part of the small area plan.
And, and Ms. Friedlander, Karen, I don't know if you were following that, but that, if you want to address the, the expected future flows coming from this and our ability to accommodate future development in the city center area.
Yes, so the, and so to be clear, we actually don't do the pump calculations. We just kind of do the alignment. There's another firm that does the calculations. But what we've done and is on one of the sheets is the, we took the small area plans and we kind of maxed out each of those blocks. So the actual force mains, the force main size can account, I think it's five other developments that's shown on that one plan sheet. And I don't know if you're referring to the, might be referring to the gravity, because there's, there's, there's two designs in there, so I don't know which one you're referring to, but the force main does account for future stuff like Maple and Annandale, like that development is accounted for in the force main design, so it doesn't have to be upgraded.
Right. No, I'm, I'm looking more at the gravity and I think it is on C0904. At the bottom of that page, it just says, "Capacity Analysis Future Small Area Plans Redevelopment." Is that, I think that's, help me understand, is that the gravity portion after the force main? Like...
No, that's if we go force main and, that is if force main doesn't happen and we go gravity. So if we go gravity, this is kind of the analysis, if we go gravity, which it does, it isn't like a mix and match. It's either kind of one or the other.
Got it. Okay, no, I thought this was the calculation, again, I'm not an engineer, I thought this was the calculation for what is on Fairfax, like what we're tying into. So it's like, okay, well, it works for, for now. So thank you for the clarification on that. I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that helps us understand our future needs. So thank you. So thank you for having them do the calc's on that as well. I think that helps us make some educated decisions. And I would be curious what the nighttime lighting plan looks like. I mean, I saw the photovoltaics or the photo plan, but it would be good to kind of see what a night rendering would look like, just to kind of get an understanding of how it's going to affect the spaces down there. But it sounds like you guys are night, sky-oriented and focusing stuff down, so I'd be curious about that. But overall, I'm pretty excited to keep it, to see it develop further. It's really moved a lot in positive ways, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kravinsky.
Not too many questions, just mostly learning. Question one, is this presentation available electronically? I took a walk around the property yesterday, and actually, this would be great to just have available as I'm walking around it again. So is that something you can distribute?
Yeah, we can send it to Ms. Arsenault, she can distribute it out to the commission.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Question two, and this may have been addressed before, is there any plan at all or an expectation to, in any way, change or upgrade the surrounding retail as part of this plan? To, I mean, they're going to look very different from this plan, the existing retail, adjoining retail. Is there any plan to sort of tie in sidewalks, to tie in along Washington Street?
Yeah, so as was mentioned before, we're going to have a connection that goes to the parklet that's being constructed here. There is an interparcial connection here where the title boxing place is and the vape shop is over here. And then there will be interparcial connections to the north here along, you know, the Fairfax Street right-of-way.
But we're not expecting the facades of any of those buildings in any way to be upgraded.
That would be up to those individual property owners, which we don't control.
And last question on the rooftop, I think it was your last slide. Just confirming, that memory garden and the assisted living terrace, they're going to be fully private, I assume.
They will be.
So I'm looking at that penthouse roof terrace, there looks like there's a big space in between that. You wouldn't be able to look over the assisted living. That would be fully private.
That's correct.
And how about the independent living on that? Will they be overlooking the memory garden?
No.
No.
I mean, from their windows.
From their windows.
From the windows, but not the actual terrace and exterior spaces.
Got it. Okay, well, that's a great-looking plan.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Stevens?
Just a quick follow-up question. You mentioned the parklet. Are you doing any design work on the parklet, or is that, that's pretty much up to the city?
That's up to the city.
Okay. So you're just providing easy access to it?
Right.
Off of that path?
Thought it made sense. I mean, it's good to have that type of connectivity for a project like this, feeding into that space.
I think the EDA, the last time I heard them discuss this, said, "Well, let's wait and see what Quinn's does." So I guess it'll get done eventually. Thanks.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question on the width of the parking entrances? Do you know what the width is for the driveway entrances?
The garage entrances?
The garage, yeah, that's a better word for it.
On the north side, it's close to, close to 30 feet, we have a pedestrian exit along the driveway entrance. I mean, separated by railings, but on the low side, oops, on the South Washington side, it's narrower, 24 feet, I believe.
Okay. I'm trying to, like, my car is 90-something inches wide. It's a van. Too many kids. But I'm trying to think of, like, from a width perspective, like, our car is 90 inches wide, which is, bad at math, six feet? Five feet wide, something like that. Six feet wide. So two cars, I'm trying to think of, like, two cars passing at 12 to 13, like, is the...
So it's a drive aisle between parking spaces, 24 feet.
24 feet. Okay.
For any size vehicle.
Yeah, it's the zoning ordinance that pretty much sets the standard for drive aisles and parking spaces, so.
Thanks.
You can actually go down to 20 in some instances, but kept it at 24.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Duncan?
We're back to the garage. Can I ask one more question? So we've learned a lot over the years about the garage experience of our multifamily buildings. Some of the early ones were scary. The later ones are better. And so I just put a marker in here to make the garage, whether it's paint, light, whatever you do, feel welcoming, because, you know, it'll make people more likely to patronize the building and its amenities. The other quickie was the green space, the green, as you indicate on your plan there, looks like a spot where, you know, concerts or something like that, small events might happen. Is it going to be connected to some electric service or any utilities available if you set up shop there?
There will be electric service to it, yes.
In the pavilion, and then also we're going to have some, you know, up around the edges, too. So that way, if there's any bugs up there, some music or whatever, yeah.
Good. Okay, thank you.
And just to respond to your first comment, there is a voluntary concession that the first level, as you go in, must be painted white or some light color, the entirety of the garage interior.
Yep, go ahead. Thank you. For, along the roof, it looks like you've got metal panels. Is that to screen all of the rooftop equipment?
Yeah, that's correct, for the mechanical penthouse.
Thank you. I am, yeah, because you'll see all that from anywhere else. So we do appreciate that. And I did want to just mention that I'm excited about the material changes, or at least, like, how it, you can really feel the heavier materials in the bottom, and they start to lighten as you go up, even the striation of the gray to the white panels. I think that's really a fabulous feature, so thank you.
Yeah, certainly.
Great. Any other last thoughts? I have a few things. I might stay in the garage, actually, since Mr. Duncan brought us back there. One thing I was wondering about is what the garage door is going to look like. I feel like this is a big part of our pedestrian realm, and it's often kind of not really thought about. But it is something that people see when they're walking down the street. So have you thought about what the materials for the garage doors might be? And I don't imagine that they're, like, super fancy materials, but I would just say, like, if you can make it as attractive as a garage door might be able to be, that would be appreciated.
The products on the market are limited, obviously.
Right.
Especially for larger openings and taller doors. But what we're planning to do is an aluminum sectional door that's better than some chain-link looking or steel options. So it's, we don't know exactly as of yet how many sections it has. It has to do with how the garage doors are built and how many, say, vertical mullions a given overhead door will need. So it's determined by its structure building, but it's an aluminum material that can be painted over. We've done the examples where they were painted a different color, or variety of colors to just blend in better.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Also in the garage, I saw there's a staff comment about the employee shower and changing area is recommended to be included in the garage. Is that something that you're still looking at?
Yes, it's, I don't think we have the plan here, but it's on the lower, one level below the...
So on G1?
G1 level of the garage. We have facilities for, I believe, two showers and two changing stations.
Okay. Yeah, we'd love to have that. I mean, this building, we're hoping will be here for 50 years or more, and I'm hoping that a lot more of our staff, who are maybe now arriving by car, will eventually be arriving by bike. So we may need more than two showers, who knows?
Yeah.
But yes, thank you for including that. I look forward to seeing those details in the next site plan. On the streetscape, my inclination would be to, you know, and I know there are a lot of discussions with city council about the streetscape plan, but we did in 2017 have a big public engagement effort to kind of design the streetscape. We had a streetscape task force, so I'm a little leery of kind of just saying, "Ah, forget all that, let's do this instead." But I also recognize that the residents of this building are maybe more vulnerable to some of the issues that people find with brick, which it being uneven and a tripping hazard. So I'm fine with whichever direction we want to go, but I just want to point out that there was a public engagement effort where this was designed, and it seems like an ongoing conversation, how it's going to be amended in the future. So I have no strong feelings about the one way or the other, but, and I don't know if my colleagues do. I think some members of city council do. So, and they're probably right in this case, that it should be, that it should be something that's more ADA-friendly.
Stamped brick.
Stamped brick, yeah. Let's see. Oh, I'll go back to the garage real quick. The parking management plan, I just noticed there are a lot of, like, "could's" or "may" or "might's," or, so I just hope that, you know, when we see the final parking management plan, that we will have some wills. We will be doing this, we will be doing that. So rather than, "we could do this," or "we could do that," there are actually some decisions being made. It read to me more like a menu of things that you could choose from or not, so it would be nice to see some commitments on that front. And let's see, I just want to understand, so the rooftop amenities, there is going to be public access to the rooftop, or there is not? Or is that still under discussion?
There would be as a part, well, it's under discussion. If we're able to get an amenity up there or some other use that's private, you know, be it a food truck or some other type of food vendor, then like any restaurant, it would be open to the public during those hours.
Okay, but if you're not able to get anything up there...
Then it would be private.
Then it would be private. And is that in the VCs, the public access to the rooftop, or is just an idea that you all had that you thought would be nice to have? Great. Okay, and the crosswalk at Maple, so I guess it cannot be raised. I want to understand the bike lane, so the bike lane traveling through that area may, hopefully, won't be nine feet wide, because I agree that could be mistaken for a parking lane. Is there a way that we can use that bike lane to kind of maybe narrow the area around that crossing, to narrow the road through there?
So Karen?
So the, yeah, so the nine-foot bike lane, so on the east side of Gibson, you have your typical six-foot bike lane, and then it's when you cross, kind of the intersection is when it's nine feet wide. So I think we could do on the west side of that Gibson, I think you could add, you know, I was thinking about it, you could add like a two-foot little striping area, even some, like, protected flexi-posts or something? I don't know. There's not very, it's not, it doesn't extend, it's kind of an interesting frontage we have, because it is, you know, the intersection comes in there. So we could look to do something between Gibson and kind of where the parking starts again to help define that bike lane. We could also add some more signage, where we can see if we can do any extra striping, too, to kind of narrow the bike lane and identify it.
And then the bike lane just becomes Shero's, right? I mean, we're really talking about a space of maybe, what, like, 50, 50 feet?
Exactly. Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's just that, yeah, it's a pretty narrow distance after you cross Gibson.
Okay, so I guess I'm, so the crosswalk, there are two crosswalks on this drawing, is, and the one that you're proposing to move is the one closer to the intersection, is that right? That's the new crosswalk?
Right, so the crosswalk that's kind of going off the page there, that's the one that's existing that's going to be removed. So that's the one that's there today, and then we're shifting that closer to the Gibson intersection.
Closer to the intersection.
Intersection. Correct, yes.
Yes, I guess, I don't know if there's some way, I mean, if there's some way to kind of narrow the crossing distance without impacting the bike lane, then that might help make that feel a little friendlier if we're not able to kind of raise that, or it sounds like we're also, the refuge shown here is not happening. Is that correct?
So this is, this is what we're proposing, but it's not, it's just a striping. It's not a raised, like, concrete median, and that's because the fire marshal requires 20 feet clear on each direction, right? So eastbound and westbound, so the median ended up being so small, it wasn't, it didn't need any standards for a center median. So that's why we're just showing the striping, because the striping can be larger, because the fire marshal can drive over the striping, right? They just can't drive over that, if it was like a curb and median. So what's shown on the right at second submission is what we are currently proposing, which, as you can see from the left, we have pushed it back, you know, further, so there is more , at least, striping around the crosswalk.
Okay. All right, thank you. I mean, this is a relatively short distance to begin with, and it's not like the traffic on Maple is, we're not, it's not Lincoln Avenue, which is unfortunate for Lincoln Avenue.
We do have the rapid flashing beacons on both sides as well.
Yep. Yeah. Okay, thank you. I think that is it from me. Oh, one other thing that Mr. Duncan just mentioned to me is, are there going to be any bike racks in the plaza or around the building outside?
Yes, there's...
They'll be placed.
There's some on Maple and some on the South Washington Plaza.
And in the, on the site in the plaza itself as well? Okay, terrific.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I agree with my colleagues that this is really exciting. When I saw the, sort of like, the special exception rendering and then the new one, I was like, "We really approved that? Wow, this is so much better." So what were we thinking? Yeah, but anyways, it's really come a long way. And just want to thank you all. Any other last comments from the group? Okay.
I can ask one last question. If this gets approved, what's the timeline for building?
Second half of the year.
Start in second half of the year?
Sure.
Okay.
In approximately 18 months for construction, like, two years.
Two years. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, and thank you, Ms. Arsenault.
All right. Thank you.
We're on to item 8A, our information items. 8A is Planning Commissioners Reports. Nope? Oh, yes.
I can bring forward a report for the Gordon, the ULI tab for the Gordon Triangle.
Oh, yeah, please.
So if you want to, you can start us off, Mr. Stevens. I know we were in separate groups, so I don't know what you were working on.
I have a few notes, but go ahead, please.
So it was great to be a part of that, so thank you for making that happen, to allow some of us additional people to be there. I appreciated that. It was a great opportunity. I think they split us off into different tables and different groups, and everybody kind of dealt with a different thing. So I was at the site design table. But at the end of the, at the end of the two days, they did do a listening session, which kind of, they gave their recommendations for, you know, key takeaways for implementation, you know, to maintain, protect and maintain the existing operations and businesses, considering that it's light industrial, which I thought was important, leverage our city-owned properties as a catalyst for new growth, conducting programming and feasibility studies to divine scope of work for the Public Services Center. And I think there was a big component that was really refreshing to hear was, you know, desire to kind of have an affordable living workforce housing portion developed within that Public Service Center. So instead of it just being the property yard, coining it more as a Public Service Center kind of gives that more of an outreach, since there's already a homeless shelter there and things like that. So I was pretty excited about that. More green space and filtration from the W&amp;O D Trail and to partner with... the, from the W&amp;O D trail, and to partner with Fairfax City, so, or Fairfax County. So it was, I think, it was really helpful. But, go ahead.
Yeah, I can just add a couple of things to that. We both participated in a stakeholder group, as well as being able to hear the final output from the members. And I would add that the actual report itself will be available, and I think they said about eight weeks. So what was given to us on Friday was just kind of, just a preliminary verbal, you know, readout. I thought in my stakeholders session, and each group was different, so, you know, there's a different composition. We had Dahlia Palchak, who's, you know, from the Fairfax County Board, and I thought she had some interesting observations to make, that we should look for opportunities between Falls Church and Fairfax County to share some opportunities between the two jurisdictions, you know, as opposed to us trying to do everything completely on our own. So, didn't get into details, but I thought that was just kind of a nice observation and gesture to make on her part. As far as the final session, there are a couple of things that I noted. There was a lot of things that came out of that, which when you consider they just were doing this for two days, it's remarkable the creativity that these folks can come up with. But one of the things they talked about was the realignment of the Gordon Road, which is something that we looked at when we had the Don Byer showroom, to kind of make the street, start to form a little bit of a street grid in that area. So they kind of showed some of that in their diagrams. They suggested that, given that there's two parcels that the city owns, that we start development with the city parcels as a way to kind of augment and stimulate development in the rest of the site. That sounded very, very good to me. Sharon mentioned the housing, and they actually suggested putting some workforce housing on the site that the city owns closest to Shreve Road. They suggested that we put in some type of a shared central parking facility, so that not each parcel needs to have their own parking, as a way to be more efficient with that need. And they suggested putting mixed use along Broad Street. And I think that is about it. Oh, they also demonstrated, or displayed adding one additional connection off the W&amp;O D into the site to make it a more porous effort to gain access via bicycle to the site. So those are just a few kinds of things that they shared thoughts about.
Mr. Duncan, did you want to add?
Thank you. Thanks to those of you who dove deeply into that ULI process. I was able to go to the Friday afternoon show, but didn't obviously get the depth that Tim just outlined. Was there any discussion at any point in any of the sessions about the concrete plant, and its, you know, continuing presence? I mean, you know, light industrial, I get, but I don't count a concrete plant as light, that's pretty heavy. And I'm just wondering if we were in cooperation with our friends in Fairfax County, if someday, somehow, somewhere...
Shading.
That thing could be moved to someplace that's not, you know, sitting less than a mile away from some of the most valuable real estate metro transit accessible land in America?
We did, we did actually discuss that in the site design group. We did have a Fairfax County planning representative there, and he was, he was actually saying, like, we should really evaluate that, because there's, they're planning a park that kind of goes up Shreve Road to kind of connect across, and that's at the node of the W&amp;O D trail. So he was seeing that while we were talking about it. He's like, yeah, we'll have to, I can't guarantee any, but he understood where we were coming from with, maybe that is more of a shared environment with Fairfax County. Somebody threw in an aquatics center at some point, you know, to try to have something that was, that was shared by both jurisdictions that tied into that park area. So it wasn't a hard no.
Good.
But it also wasn't a, yes, we can move.
No, nothing worthwhile will be easy and won't get done quickly. But as we plan our agenda for the coming year, I would encourage leadership of the planning commission to reach out to our friends in Fairfax, and try to keep an open line and open mind about that, because to me, that's what really sets that area apart, from being some modified version of what's there now, to something more transformational, and able to meet, you know, more of the other needs that you listed, rather than, you know, concrete trucks, which are just never going to be compatible with any kind of streetscape, or street grid, or whatever, they're going to be concrete trucks. So, okay, well, good, thanks. I'm glad you all got that. The only thing I would add, since we met last, we had groundbreaking for the hit headquarters and cooperative venture with Virginia Tech. That was a couple of weeks ago, it was a great event, and Representative of the Governor's Office came, and Don Byer was there, and first-class event, and exciting, you know, project that will be getting going, I guess, just in, just about any day now. Don't forget about the Whole Foods grand opening Friday morning.
Bread breaking.
Bread breaking at 7:30.
30.
Yeah. A little early for me, but I'll try...
Maybe get some bread.
I'll try to be there. And Mr. Stevens and I were at the EDA meeting last night. My note from that is, some hope, some promise, that the Stratford demolition is really, truly near in sights, right, Tim? Did I hear that?
They said it's coming.
So that's good. And then the other ULI tap event, the Broad and Washington case study, was, when was that, Tim? Last week, about this time, right? It was Thursday or so. It was the same day as the ULI thing that you guys went to.
Friday, yeah.
Yeah. And it was a good program. It was, you know, Ross Littenhouse, the EDA Chair, was the city spokesperson, and Laura Hall from Creative Cauldron was there, and the rest of the folks on the panel were the team from inside, describing various elements, design, landscaping, et cetera. And the audience was very attentive, and got a little picture of how challenging that project was, although I must say that, you know, just listening to the discussion, it was a near-death experience for that thing multiple times. And it's somewhat miraculous that we actually, over the course of about 10 years, finally, finally are going to get the thing up and, up and open. But nothing, nothing good gets done quickly. And hopefully the neighbors will find it's a good neighbor, and be able to walk the grocery, and play at Creative Cauldron, and they've already got one restaurant signed, and hopefully they'll get another one, and hopefully it'll become a new anchor for where's Falls Church. Oh, you know where that is, it's that crossroads that has the new buildings.
Can, can I come back just briefly to the Gordon Triangle? The light industrial that I think they were really talking about was, you know, there's a metal shop there that, and it would be more like, how, at least how our table was talking about it. I don't know how it's going to translate into a final plan, or a final recommendation. But it was, we were talking about the idea of having this work-live loft, you know, you have your own shop, you've got your artisan community, kind of things like that, that kind of gives you a different type of living environment, with different, different aspects that are part of that light industrial by nature, to kind of, as a transition between the retail and the light industrial, and then to the housing that is, that is being proposed, like, in one of the sites along Shreve. So I thought it was really a great way to kind of bridge that gap and that transition across the various...
That sounds really interesting. Like, I love the idea of turning that into a, your bar restaurant thing is next to, like, a real artisan community. It's a real, like, makes, real mixed-use, as opposed to retail and living. But it's actually like a place where you can go. And my hope that long-term, and I did not make it to the thing, so my voice did not get heard in this particular thing, but like, the concept of turning Gordon Road into like a walkable pedestrian road in between Shreve and Broad Street, so that there's like, a whole thing there. I mean, that's a 20-year plan, but I'd love to see if we can get there.
Yeah, and just the idea of being able to kind of connect back to the W&amp;O D trail, and have it be more permeable. You could have these little shops, you know, so it really kind of went down a path. So it'd be interesting to see what the final recommendation comes back as.
I think we will be talking about it more in our annual advance. Yeah, which, speaking of, there are no other items?
Just one other footnote from the EDA meeting. There was mention last night of a celebration for Brown's Hardware. The tentative date they gave out was March 28th, it would be at Clarion Don's. So obviously, more to follow on that, but that's where it stood last night.
Thank you. And thanks to both of you for the extra time you took to participate in the stakeholder roundtable. Yeah, it's really great to have our voices there. Okay, I think we can move on. Good discussion. Lots to talk about on the Gordon Road front, I think. So we'll go to item 8B, the Director's Report. Mr. Fuller?
Yes, thank you. So, at our next meeting on the 19th, we'll have Shadow Walk Back for final action. Then we have three work sessions, CIP, Affordable Living Policy, and Accessory Dwellings. And that would be your final work session is scheduled on accessory dwellings. We've moved Maple and Annandale Special Exception off of that agenda, because it was too heavy, and so they've moved a month to March 19th. And we've notified them. In terms of March 5th, Accessory Dwellings Final Public Hearing, the Quinn Site Plan is scheduled for a final action then as well, and then the CIP Final Public Hearing, so that's a month from now. Then on, no, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, it's a month from now. And then March 19th, Maple and Annandale Special Exception Work Session on that, and Affordable Living Policy Work Session is tentatively scheduled for that, depending on how things shape up with them.
Sorry, do we have the Affordable Living Policy, if you scroll back up, Chuck, on the 19th, too? Do we have it both nights, or is that a mistake?
Well, you have it...
Oh, that second one that's tentative is just tentative?
Yeah.
If they can come back to us, so we are definitely...
So they're doing the first one, and then a month later, they're thinking they need to come back, but it's, they're not sure yet.
Okay.
They'll see how they, they got off to kind of a rough start, so I think they're trying to get back on track.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Duncan?
And the 5th, the Accessory Dwellings Public Hearing is followed by a vote by us, or, I forget where we are on the 5th?
Yeah, I think that would be the vote.
So we're having a final work session on the 19th, but then we are voting on...
March 5th.
Okay. So that's supposed to be well in advance of when council would take it up on...
They have their final work session on the 10th.
No, they, work session, yes, right, and then they'll move the vote to April 14th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So our last bite at that apple is going to be on March the...
19th. Well, March 5th is the, yeah, the public hearing and vote.
Yeah, okay.
That'll be the last time. But the, our next session, I mean, we talked about it for two hours at our last meeting, but I think we will have more to discuss. Everybody feeling okay on that February 19th agenda? It'll be busy, but I think it's doable. Busy time for the city. Okay, thank you.
Yes, all right. So that's your upcoming agenda. In terms of some Director Reports, just as an informational item, the zoning division does a quarterly activity report, so we provided that as information to you. And then the CIP is coming to you in work session on the 19th, in two weeks. And while you'll get it digitally, if anybody wants a binder copy of it, we're asking for hand count tonight, so we can know how many binders to provide to the commission.
I'd like one, too.
So, you want to just do the whole group?
I think that'd be easier, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably would be. It's up to you.
Well, you just said the whole group, I'll take one.
All right, so we'll...
Thank you.
We don't like trees.
We'll let staff know that everybody would like a binder copy.
There's your card.
All right, that gets us to the last item I had, and it was the item that we started earlier as a discussion on the advance.
Is your mic on?
I turned it off, yes. The last item I had was a discussion on the advance and dates for that. We had talked about an agenda previously to our last meeting. I'd followed up with the Chair, and we'd spoke a little further on that. And so at this point, I'll turn it back over to you to talk about possible dates, whether it be before an upcoming meeting, or another night out. It depends on what...
Yeah, I don't know that I've checked in with everybody on the commission, but I talked to a number of people, and I think there was some general agreement that, while it's not preferable to add another night of being together to our schedules, like, we didn't, we didn't feel like we could really have a good substantive discussion in, like, an hour and a half before a regular meeting. That felt a little too cramped. So I think the preference would be to find a date that works for all of us. It would be an additional meeting date sometime in the next two months. So I guess my question for you is, like, should we try to, or, Mr. Fuller, is should we aim to keep that on a Wednesday, or can it be a different night of the week, or how, and what kind of advertising requirements do we have? Like, should we be looking at, like, late February to March? Or what sort of constraints would we have around choosing a date?
Yeah, I mean, you're correct in that we need to advertise it.
Yeah, I think your mic's off again.
I'm sorry. I keep turning it off. Yeah, we would need to advertise it as a special meeting, and we don't, I would also need to find a room. And so those would be the two first things. The idea of doing a Wednesday out works good for me and staff, if that works good for the commission. So in other words, you're used to coming first and third Wednesdays, maybe we look at, you know, the in-between Wednesdays. Could be the 12th of March, or 26th, for example, or we could do another night. You know, once again, it would be just a matter of me being able to take a couple of dates and make sure I can secure a room.
Okay. The 26th. I did ask Mr. Krasner, he says he'll be away March 19th to 25th.
Okay.
And you're away the 12th. Would the 26th work for others?
26th of March?
Of March.
That works for me.
Yep. Yes, I think I can do that. Okay. And I don't know if any of our boards and commissions meet on the last Wednesday of the month, so maybe we could get Dogwood. My preference would be Dogwood, if possible, like, it's some, a more informal environment than this.
Yes, that one, okay. We'll check rooms. I will contact you if I can't find an appropriate room available that night. Then we can look for alternative dates and come back to you.
Okay.
We obviously have time, and, you know, a date, you know, this far out gives me a chance to prepare everything for it.
Okay. Do we, do we want to choose a backup date, in case the 26th is not workable?
That would be helpful.
Do we want to choose one now?
Yeah, sure.
So...
Yeah, one or two, if you can't agree on one, that's fine.
We're kind of getting close to spring break in April. The 9th is the CCT's meeting, so they'd be in Dogwood. Are there other, like, do we need to be in City Hall, or are there other locations that we've used in the past?
Downstairs, isn't there?
Yeah, the library, or...
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's the library. We used Viget one time, a long time ago. That's, you know, private entity, but...
Oh, the library closes at 9, yeah, right, okay. Yeah, Viget could be an option.
Did we put the 12th of March on?
Well, I think Mr. Duncan would be missing that night.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we had one.
Gotcha.
Did we have it on the 19th of March at one point?
Was that a meeting?
That's our regular meeting. Yeah, that's our, that's our regular meeting night, yeah. Yeah.
What's your backups?
Well, I guess the backup could be April 9th. I leave for Seattle the next day, so it's a little tough, but it's okay. April 9th.
The 9th works for me.
And I think Mr. Krasner said he's away again, April 14th to 18th, so that should work for him. Yeah.
That's very right.
Yeah.
That's right.
So April 9th is a backup date, not preferred.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll start with those and.
Thank you.
I'll also explore a little bit offsite. Anyway.
Only if it's needed. I mean, maybe we get Dogwood on the, on March 23rd, or March, sorry.
26th.
26th.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
And that's great.
That's going to be, yeah, it's going to be what I'm going to check, and then I'll, you know, I'll look at April 9th, and then, you know, if I can come up with anything offsite as an option, it might be fun too.
Okay.
I'll see.
Yeah, the other Dogwood. That'd be great.
The other Dogwood.
Yeah. Very good.
All right, thank you. And you anticipate we'll be able to have the ULI tap, at least the slides that were shared in the presentation? Has that been shared with staff?
Yes, I, I've talked to Emily, and the slides are available, and there's a video available. And so we were going to look at that and see how, how long that is. Obviously, you know, it could be kind of the, the longer of your agenda items, now that we have a separate night out, but, so I'll figure out what the timing is on those medias, and then, but, but we do have the slideshow, for sure, and we do have the video. And so how long those are, and how much time you want to devote to that. So anyway, so we'll, we'll have that available for you in, in some format or short version.
Okay.
And then in 60 days, the reports will be out. And I've asked, like, what is the plan? Are they going to have a digital report, or do we have any print copies? And so she's not sure, because the Urban Land Institute handles that in terms of, you know, the final product and how many copies of what media are available. So I'll find out more on that. So that's, that's two months out, so we're not going to wait for that, obviously, but we'll share that when we have it available.
Yeah, there was a lot of good information even just in those slides, you know, that sort of high level, so that'd be great.
And I was, I was at the event. I was ascribed for the transportation table, and I did talk with the mayor. She approached me afterwards, and she talked about that she would like to have a follow-up on, on the recommendations in May for the council.
Mm-hmm.
And so I spoke to Emily about that. So, so she, she doesn't want to, you know, rush to follow up on it, but she wanted to kind of put a marker down, May would be a good time to revisit it, and what are the next steps, and so forth.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll need to be a little proactive to, to make anything happen there.
Yeah, all right.
Especially if the city's leading the way, as recommended.
Yeah. All right, that, that's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Correspondence, item 8C. I think we had one. It might have been something that I shared with the group. Oh, I think you put it under Planning Commissioners. We don't have any correspondence. I, I, I sent, I asked Jack to share this Nova Housing article from Fairfax Now, which is pretty depressing, on, uh, Fairfax, uh, Falls Church City is our, we're number one in, yeah, the number one least affordable, the number one most expensive median price for our, for our homes. So, good information to have, not, not, not a good, not a good thing necessarily for the city if people can't afford to live here.
Maybe put that on our advanced, advanced agenda.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Should we try to get out of here before it starts icing? Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
Bye. Good night.
Hey, Sharon.